One minute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody ready? Good evening, we'll call this work session of the common council to order, may we have roll call please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cruss.
Excused.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much, all work session items listed are for discussion only, no action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meeting is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations, item number one, TPT quarterly collection report, Mr. Foggan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I was going to turn it back to you, did you want to cover the opioid issue first, or?
Absolutely, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry Tina.
No, no problem at all. Thank you very much, we have some gentlemen with time constraints, so thank you for understanding. So we're going to start with item number three, the opioid litigation discussion. I've asked Pat Webb to come speak to you briefly on this issue, he has the PowerPoint presentation. Little bit about Patrick, he's a lifelong Kingman resident, graduated from Kingman High in 2014. He's a 2018 graduate of Florida Southern University with a degree in political science, he graduated cuma- summa cum laude. And he is now going to attend Emory University School of Law. The reason Patrick is here this evening is he contacted me a while back and asked if I could think of a topic that was local, of importance to his community that could eventually turn into some kind of litigation or opportunity for community improvement. And when I suggested the opioid crisis, I know you contacted our police chief and then you've done some incredible research, and you want to share what your grade was on your senior thesis?
It was an A.
There you go, well, thank you for being here this evening, we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, yes, thank you Monica Gates and the city council. My presentation was titled Counties Taking Actions for my senior thesis for my senior seminar class. The idea is that we focus on using Bardock's policy analysis, AD issue in one of our communities and trying to find out how to resolve it. And if I can get to the PowerPoint somehow. Long one, sorry about this. There we go. There we go.
I'm sorry, could you pull your mic up a little?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you guys aren't able to see, I apologize, but from the graphs you can see that the opioid rate in the state of Arizona has increased dramatically since 2006, 2007-ish, and then Mojave County by itself, it's rising substantially fast. And so in conversations with some members of the community, the ideas that are being located on and following the data is that because of our small county, we have few resources specifically access to treatment. And that is kind of where my presentation and my research kind of took off, is trying to find ways to solve those issues. If you look at the Mojave County death rate, you can see that there's a sharp climb in congruence with the state's climb. And so what are the issues that are facing Mojave County, which is requiring this to be so much worse than the state of Arizona by itself? And it's by locating those issues that the city council on the county can focus on county-related issues while the federal and state governments work on the federal and state issues. And I think it's important to realize, especially in this situation with the opioid epidemic, is that there is things that the city council and county-level decision-makers can do, which the federal and state government cannot do, just simply because they don't know the issues the way we do, and it's also not within the scope of leadership. The contributions to Mojave County's rising death rates is one, the rural environment, so we have one inpatient treatment facility in which people facing an opioid addiction can go for long-term treatment. That inpatient facility treatment is partially shared with other counties in the state of Arizona and is very limited number of beds. There's also only one medical prescriber administering medication-assisted treatment. And then also the very large county land mass and the small amount of resources. The federal assistance is happening, if anybody's been looking at the federal government and their policies, they are giving mostly grants to communities, police departments, medical organizations, public health departments, to try to either raise awareness or find solutions to fix these problems. The state assistance in January, the Governor Doug Ducey just signed a House Bill 2001 in which acts increased access to treatment substantially. However, a lot of the options available in that state bill aren't exactly helpful for our community, mostly because we don't have the already-built centers in which Governor Ducey's legislation is really looking towards. It's more of those facilities in Tucson and Phoenix which already have been built, and it's just now being grown. There was provisions in some of those in which restricts the building of new health centers, so it kind of leaves Mojave County, and we don't have any in general restricted. Local policy options, we always choose for one of them being do nothing, in case that ends up being the best, it rarely is. The special grant request is by having the city of Kingman hire more grant writers or lobby, the state legislator in order to get more of those funds directed to us, although there is the option of getting those grants, you have to apply for them, and oftentimes they get given to the bigger communities like Phoenix or Tucson under the rationale that since there's more people being affected by opioid addiction, then that's where the president takes place, while they're not looking at the per capita amount. And if you look at the per capita amount, like saw graph shown earlier, you can tell that Mojave County is being hit far worse than Phoenix, Tucson, and some of those other areas. A location center is through talking with people in the community, is the lack of understanding of the resources already available. So if you have a medical practitioner with a patient who comes in showing signs of opioid dependency, what do they do with those patients? Do they send them to the public health department, do they send them to rehab center? The physicians and medical practitioners in some of every city don't exactly know what options are available. And then the people suffering from opioid addiction don't know what options are available. So you can make all of the implementation of programs, you want in the city, yet if you don't get the vote out to the local physicians and people suffering from it, no one's ever going to know about it. And then finally increase medication-assisted treatment facilities. And for the sake of time, I'm just going to skip to the medication-assisted treatment facilities. In the Bardock model, we always look for cost-benefit and risk analysis, so we see out of all the options we have, which one is going to cost the least, have the most benefit, and in the long term be the least amount of risk. For the options I spoke about, a lot of them may not have too great a benefit or a lot of risk. I argue in my research that medication-assisted treatment is the best option, and it's not only that for opioid dependency, but for healthcare in general in our community. It's quite obvious that there is not enough medical prescribers to fulfill all the needs of our community, and especially in medication-assisted treatment facilities in which federal regulations require that they have a license to do so. So it's not just any medical practitioner can hand out these medication treatment, treatments like methadone. It has to be someone licensed to do so, and not many people in within Mojave County, especially Kingman, are licensed to do so. So from the city council's perspective, this is the policy option which I think you all should really consider is how are we going to incentivize the medical practitioners in our city to, one, become licensed by the federal government, state governments, to prescribe medication-assisted treatment for opioid addiction, and two, how to get them to actually do it? There was levels of amounts of patients each physician can, it's up to like a hundred if you have special requests, in which they can see that many patients. In my research, we looked through a bunch of options, one of the perhaps most extreme is giving tax deductions or tax relief programs to the main medical center, KOMC, if they were to require their physicians and nurse practitioners to prescribe, get licensed, and see patients with opioid dependencies. And if not that, then to look into options of somehow incentivizing them to do so, whether it's by building and teaming up with them to build a new center. So all those options, which is dramatically up to the city council to kind of figure out, meet with them, and have these special sessions in which we can figure out a way to get more medical practitioners to give medication-assisted treatment. But that's my research, thank you.
Thank you very much, very informative. You have questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question, if, I know you're trying to get out of here, right?
Good try, good try.
Thank you for your research and sharing that with us, just a quick question. And maybe this is to the council as well, but I know that maybe just city of Kingman, our hands may be tied a little bit, but maybe there's an opportunity for us, I know that the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, once a year, they do a call to all of their members for any draft bills that we want to submit, I mean, maybe there's an opportunity for us to craft language for communities that are like Kingman to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and maybe we could push a bill through our lobbyist, it's just an option.
I know that Governor Doug Ducey in that bill I was speaking about earlier approved $10 million to be used as a way for medical practitioners to see patients administer medication-assisted treatment, and then the state pays for it using this fund of $10 million. Again, the issue is we don't have anyone already prescribing yet, so it doesn't matter how much money the state gives, we don't have the medical practitioners doing it, so yeah, that might be a good idea to incentivize medical practitioners to get licensed in order to do it.
And that's really the, how do you get that done, right, we had to put our thinking caps on, and if you can put something in a bill maybe and put it down to the league, that would maybe incentivize those medical professionals in rural areas, you know?
I hope so.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Pat, if you don't mind, may I share your report with the rest of the council? Got a lot of really great information in there, thank you so much, appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening.
Thank you.
May I please call Dan Mencher?
Mayor and council members, I appreciate the invitation to come and speak with you today. I've talked about opioid epidemic litigation across the West, in Washington State, in Oregon, in California, and in Arizona, and in Idaho, and I have never had such a nice tee-up for my conversation. So I'd like to thank you very much for that presentation, I also was, I'm now a lawyer at a private law firm, we have offices in Phoenix and in Seattle, but before I became, or before I joined the firm four and a half years ago, I was a law professor in Oregon for about six and a half years, and I think you have a Kingman resident who's going to become a very good lawyer when he graduates, so it's particularly nice to have some, the issues set up as they are. I'm going to try to keep my presentation relatively short so that you can ask questions, my goal here is to not tell you things you already know, but to make sure that we're focused on the things that are important. My firm Keller Rohrback, as I said, offices in Phoenix and in Seattle, we are one of the 12 firms that were appointed by Judge Polster to represent the counties, cities, and tribes that have brought lawsuits related to the opioid epidemic across the country. I'll talk about how all of the cases work in just a little bit, but in general, we represent, I think, 30 some odd counties across the West, including, we just filed a case on behalf of Cochise County last week here in Arizona. The cases really are about holding the companies that manufacture and distribute opioids, hold them responsible for the mess that they have helped to create. Companies like Purdue that created OxyContin, companies like Cardinal Health that distribute astonishing amounts of opioid medications across the country, really started this epidemic that we're now suffering through today. And the history of how we got here, right, we just had a terrific presentation about all of the impacts, right? Astonishing death rates, right, people becoming addicted because of prescriptions that their family doctors gave to them. Those prescriptions end up getting people addicted to things like OxyContin, Oxycodone, Hydrocodone, and then shifting over into use of heroin, and terrifyingly fentanyl as well. The history of how we got here, I think, is important to understand why this litigation makes sense. And why, in fact, a lot of counties and city governments that might otherwise sort of shy away from litigation in this context say, wait a minute, this is a time and place where we actually do need to stand up and hold corporations responsible for the mess they made. Personal responsibility, obviously critically important, but that kind of responsibility, when a company like Purdue or Johnson &amp; Johnson is marketing a Schedule II narcotic drug that we know can addict you and kill you in one dose, there's some added responsibility there. So if we go back to 1996, when OxyContin was first approved by the FDA for use in generic pain contexts, before that approval, there really were no pure opioids available on the market. A doctor, if she or he was going to give someone a pure opioid, would only be inpatient care, right? Somebody who has just had surgery and is going to be under close doctor care, or someone who is at the end of his or her life with acute cancer pain, that would be a context where you'd have OxyContin, or excuse me, Oxycodone or Hydrocodone being delivered, so in pill form at home. Well, the Purdue Company developed the very first timed-release version of this medication, it's called OxyContin. The "contin" part of the oxy is continuous release. They realized when they got the patent for this drug, that although it was a good drug, it did the things that they wanted it to, it was limited to post-surgery care, limited a few days, and end-of-life palliative care. So pretty limited markets if you're a company like Purdue and your goal is to make billions of dollars. So Purdue, Janssen, Endo, and Mallinckrodt, the four biggest manufacturers of prescription opioids, put together an incredibly sophisticated campaign to convince doctors, regulators, patients, that this stuff was safe. Not only was it safe, can't get addicted, they told people, but it's great for long-term use, right? I, a couple of years ago, crashed into a dog on my bicycle and shattered my collarbone, it was a bummer. I had surgery, I took Hydrocodone for about three or four days after that. That's a, that's a sort of a normal use of this stuff, right, it's good for that acute, short-term pain. OxyContin, they wanted you to take not just days, but for months on end. There's a real problem with that, though, because as you take more, as you take OxyContin or one of these opioids for a longer period of time, your body starts, it stops receiving that pain-relieving action from the opioid. So you have to take more and more higher and higher doses of OxyContin in order to get the same pain-relieving effect. Sort of an astonishing fact here, when I, so as I said, I shattered my collarbone, I was taking five milligrams of Hydrocodone three times a day. But OxyContin comes until just a few years ago in 160-milligram tablets, which is astonishing. If you took 160-milligram tablet of OxyContin today, you would die, you would stop breathing, and you would expire. So it gives you an idea that they were telling doctors, Purdue and others were saying, look, everyone, take, you have, you have a wrist pain, you have rotator cuff, your back is painful, you have toothache, take OxyContin or one of these other prescription medications. Don't worry, you'll start for the first two weeks at five milligrams per dose, then 10-milligram a dose, then 20-milligram a dose, then 40-milligram a dose, and right on up, and don't worry, because all of our evidence shows that less than 1% of people taking OxyContin and other opioids become addicted to this stuff. Total fabrication, an incredible lie that they told with dishonestly, but they told it well. They told it through sending drug reps to doctors' offices, and then tracking what that doctor did for prescriptions. Sort of astonishing, Purdue, the Sackler brothers own Purdue, they also own a company that tracks every prescription written and filled in the United States. So if, when I went to the doctor, when I went to the pharmacy to get the prescription filled for my collar, after my collarbone was broken, they knew exactly what my doctor had written for me and what I ended up filling as a prescription. They didn't just do it themselves, they didn't just dole out Purdue or Johnson &amp; Johnson branded advertisements, they took over a lot of the third-party organizations, so there was the American Pain Foundation as an example. It started in the 70s, it was a group of neurologists who started this organization. It was a well-respected group that exchanged information, they had annual conferences, et cetera. Well, by the late 1990s, Purdue, Endo, and Janssen had taken over the board of this organization. Either directly their employees were sitting on the board of that organization, or their paid spokespeople were. So now you see paid, you see, excuse me, American Pain Foundation branded prescription guidelines coming out. So doctors talked about saying, look, I really trusted the American Pain Foundation, so when they were telling me this stuff is safe and effective, I thought it was pretty good. They held, they managed to co-op some of the best doctors in the country and use them as their mouthpieces. Anyway, I could go on and on about the kind of marketing that they did to convince doctors that this stuff was safe and it was effective. I'm going to shift into the specifics of the litigation, but I want to tell you one more sort of fabrication. As I said, they told you it's effective, it's great for long-term chronic pain, don't worry, it's also safe for you. But they knew patients were going to show up in doctors' offices exhibiting classic signs of addiction, right? People were going to show up saying, doctor, I lost my pills, my dog ate them accidentally, flushed them on the toilet. Hey doc, can I have some more, I'm going to be out of town for a while, so doc can I have more of a particular brand or higher quantities? Again, all the kinds of signs that a doctor would have been trained to look for and say, maybe we have a problem here, we have to deal with this. Well, Purdue came up with the concept of pseudo-addiction. And they told doctors, when your patient presents him or herself in your office complaining that the pain is too great, or any of these other sort of classic addiction signs, don't worry, they can't be addicted, so it's not addiction, it's pseudo-addiction. All that means is you need to prescribe them more opioids, right? So instead of saying, gosh, we have a problem here, let's figure out a way to curtail this person's use of opioids, and then, no, 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 let's jack that up, right? So as a result, you have opioids, prescription opioids, going from one of the top 20 most prescribed categories of drugs to being the number-one category of drugs prescribed in the United States by orders of magnitude, right? There are essentially one prescription for opioids written per every American citizen, and that includes babies to grannies, right? So, which is just astonishing, right? Again, not to say that we wouldn't have people addicted to heroin today, obviously, before OxyContin was around, we had people who are using heroin, who are abusing heroin, of course, that's true. But we see an extraordinary rise in death rates, in addiction rates, et cetera. In the United States, for example, today, on average, 200 Americans will have died from an opioid overdose, we think that's wrong. Not only is it a personal tragedy and a family tragedy, but as we just heard, it's a real burden on cities and counties and the budgets that you have, right? Here we are saying, we don't have a doctor here in city of Kingman who's able to prescribe Suboxone or some of the other recovery medicines that we need, again, I would wholeheartedly agree, MAT, this medically assisted treatment is, it's not a miracle, it doesn't always work, but it's the best tool that we have. It's expensive, it requires local resources, it requires people who are committed to doing the kinds of things that we need to address addiction. So, you know, we look, obviously profoundly difficult trying for families and for individuals who are addicted to this, but it's also really a crisis that has landed, I think, maybe uniquely, on the shoulders of local government, whether that's cities and counties, right? It's you all who are dealing with arresting people who are, you know, who are dealing illegal substances. It's you all who are on the front line of dealing with people who are on those illegal substances and having problems, who are living on the streets. It's up to you all to, you know, try to fund the kinds of treatment technology or treatment systems that we need, or that your community needs. The last thing I'd say, and I would love to encourage questions, some people have asked me, well, why not just leave this to the state? Shouldn't the state be taking care of this? I think the answer to that is, sure, the state clearly has a role in this. But I think that cities and counties are also important actors in this litigation for the simple reason that you all know what your community needs, right? The tobacco litigation, a lot of people say, oh, this is just like the tobacco litigation, but I don't think it is, and it's important to see why. In the tobacco litigation, only the states brought their cases, right, and only the states got those dollars. They held the purse strings, they decided where the dollars would go. Here, though, your city is the one that's spending those dollars, your city is also the one who's going to know how best to spend those dollars, right? Kingman is different from Phoenix, is different from San Francisco, is different from Seattle. So the kinds of intervention that you all would want to fund and do is going to be different and unique to your community. So making sure that those dollars are being spent locally, or be determining where you're going to spend them locally, I think that's critically important. So again, the federal government has a role, sure, state has a role, but I think local governments have a role as well. So rather than dithering on more, are there any questions that I can answer at all about this? Yes, Mayor Gates?
Thank you very much for that presentation. A question that comes up frequently when we talk about this type of litigation is people say, will that somehow impede my ability to get pain medication? Could you kindly address that, please?
Of course, Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, one of the luxuries that I have working at my firm is that we've been able to hire some of the, probably world experts on opioid use. One of the critical things that we have been doing, in fact, just on, just yesterday, I was meeting with Dr. Lemke, who is, I believe she's at Duke, but I could be wrong about that, she, we spent an afternoon talking about what is a legitimate use of opioids. And she was very clear, she said, look, the 1970s were a pretty crummy time for people who were dealing with pain, right? We didn't know what we were doing, we were all so afraid of opioids that we didn't want to prescribe them for anything, right? And most you could get Vicodin that was Tylenol and two and a half grams of Oxycodone, right? That was about as large of a dose that we could get. In the 1980s, we began to get a little bit more enlightened, we began to realize, gosh, there are places for this. So as she calls it, you know, it's sort of this pendulum went from one end of the spectrum to the other, and she said, we've sort of gone crazy off the rails, and that in her view, you know, this litigation, some of the regulatory action, et cetera, is really important to bring that back to a rational and reasonable place, but certainly no one is arguing that there's no role for opioids. Again, you know, the kind of, you get your collarbone broken, you have surgery, et cetera, those, it's an important tool in the arsenal. But what's happened is, that's the only tool that we have, and as a result, was this monster explosion in opioid use around the country.
Thank you for that, other questions?
I have a question. If there's a settlement and the city receives funds, if I understand what I've heard, we need medically assisted treatment, or medical assisted treatment, we need incentives so that the medical professionals can prescribe these medicines. So are there criteria or constraints on the city's use of this? Because normally, our role in this- Because normally, our role in this with our police department, you know, we have a fabulous partnership with our police and all of the areas here on magnet and drug, you know, control. But how would, we would need to funnel this perhaps in some unique ways for the city. And so are there any constraints that you would see on the use of these funds if we were to receive them?
Vice Mayor Miles, I appreciate your question. There may be multiple layers of answers to your question. The first answer is, let's say there's a settlement or we win after going to trial in this case. The judge can't, or the, no one's going to put constraints on those funds, right? It's going to be, not, "Here are the dollars that you are awarded as a city. Do with it as you will." There may, however, be requirements that you have according to city code that might hamper or at least constrain how you go about spending those dollars. You know, I, in some of the work that I've done in communities in, I guess a good example are some rural counties in Washington, in the very northwest Olympic Peninsula of Washington, Clallam County, Kitsap County, and Jefferson County. I think they have a total population between the three counties of something like 300,000 people, but they're distributed across an extraordinarily broad geographic range. What they've been doing over the last five years, they've realized that there was a huge problem that they were dealing with and that individually, those counties weren't going to have enough resources to deal with this problem. So they got together, they called it, they created the Tri-County Opioid Task Force. They have one main treatment facility, and then they have five satellite facilities, whereas, you know, maybe it's a office space where they have one of their clinicians travel around. So that's how they decided to pool their money in order to address this problem. Instead of incentivizing other private doctors to prescribe this stuff, they said, "You know what? We're just going to take some of our funds and spend them on our own doctors and deal with this problem." But that was just something that they decided to do. Part of the litigation, part of what we're working on for those three counties when our, when we filed the complaints for them is to say, "Look, we've spent a lot of money already. We want you, Purdue, we want you, AmerisourceBergen, to help pay the costs for this problem that we've been trying to solve with our own dollars. So pay us back some of that money." The other part of this litigation isn't just sort of back-looking, it's really forward-looking, it's saying, "If we had more resources, what would we do with those resources, right? Would it be to put a medically assisted treatment facility here in Kingman and fund that?" Those are the kinds of questions that we are working on with our experts, but ultimately, that's how we're articulating the case, right? It's one, I guess, really ultimately, it's one, knock off your bad behavior, right? Stop lying, stop failing to meet your responsibilities, right? Morally responsible entities are good to have, also law-abiding companies are good to have. So one, stop your shenanigans. Two, pay us back for the costs that we've already suffered. And three, probably most importantly, help us find the resources to do the things that we know what we need to do, whether that's outreach to schools, right? I mean, one of the awful tragedies of the opioid epidemic is it is aimed at young people. Young people, unfortunately, are a disproportionate part of this problem, and it's because, from some of the interviews that I've done with juveniles, they say, "Look, it doesn't seem as dangerous as pot to me, right? It doesn't seem as dangerous as cocaine or whatever, because a doctor prescribed it. It comes in that brown pill bottle that my family doctor prescribed to my mom, so I find it and I take one, and then lo and behold, here you have." Some of the counties, we see 10th graders reporting, something like 15% of 10th graders in a couple of the counties in Washington State say that they've used an opioid recreationally in the last month. That's terrifying, right? Because now you can say, "If, even if we just stopped prescribing opioids tomorrow, we now have potentially a generational problem," or intergenerational problem, because we have kids who are addicted to this stuff that we will be dealing with for a long time. Maybe even more tragically is, we've got babies who are being born addicted to opioids, right? I spent some time on one of the tribe, with the Nez Perce tribe in Idaho, and they said that something like 35% of all children born in the last four years on the reservation were addicted to opioids, right? And so there they are saying, "This is an extraordinary burden on the government, on our community. We have grannies and grandpas who are raising these children, et cetera." Right? In Cochise County, I was meeting with their prosecuting attorney, and he said that they have had dependency hearings go up 400% over the last four years. And he said 95% of that increase is directly related to the fact that kids, that parents of these kids are on opioids and no longer able to parent. So maybe that was a long-winded answer to your narrow question, but that's really what the case is about, getting funds to try to tackle this problem. It's not the only thing that's going to happen, it's not the only thing that's going to help, but I think it's a puzzle, a part of the puzzle, a piece of the puzzle to try to get our arms around this crisis. Yeah.
Well, getting resources, of course, is always desirable, but I was just thinking, you're mentioning counties, and of course, our county has a health department, excellent health department, and much more connectivity in that regard to health programs and partnerships. So are a lot of cities joining this litigation also?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, my very first client, I filed a complaint on behalf of Tacoma, Washington, almost a year ago now. Tacoma, Washington is a small city of about 120,000 people just south of Seattle, and I had worked with them on a couple of other cases, and I happened to be meeting with one of their attorneys, and I mentioned that I'd been doing a bunch of research on opioid epidemic, and he said, "Our mayor is fit to be tied." We just learned from, they do an annual homeless assessment, where they do one night out, they do a sweep, they find out who's out on the street. They did a survey, and they came back with 75 to 80% of all their homeless people were addicted to opioids, right? Whether that, the opioid addiction brought them to the street or is keeping them on the street, didn't really matter to the mayor. She said, "This is, you know, we're spending so much time, money, resources, energy on our homeless population, right? It was hard enough to begin with, and now we're dealing with these addictions, right? And that's awful for the homeless population, it's not great for the community at large, but boy, did it have some astonishing price tags." Right? I mean, one of the things that I learned when I met with the fire department there, their emergency services went from 10, 15 years ago, dealing with these acute ALS calls is what I learned they're called, right? You know, someone has a heart attack, someone's crushed by something or other, that's really what they're set up for. But now, 80% of their work is responding to these, you know, a skin infection, someone's pulled the tooth out so that she can get taken to the hospital to get access to opioids. And he said that, "Look, it's just, it has overwhelmed our department, the burden on us from the opioid epidemic." And so that was really our very first case. And the city felt it was really important for them politically to do something, it was important potentially financially, and it was, it was just, this was something that the city wanted to do. And I'd be happy to share with you the complaint that we wrote for them, but we really detailed all the particular harms that they had felt and the kinds of actions they'd like to take if they had more resources. You know, and sometimes, last point on that is, we have on occasion filed complaints where the county and the cities in that county have filed the same complaint. So for example, Skagit County, the four biggest cities, Cedro-Willy, et cetera, all filed one case together, because they felt like, "Look, we share a lot of resources, we share the same issues, et cetera." So.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's better to know of that.
Question or comment?
Yeah, just one question. So are you asking the city of Kingman to join in some sort of a class action lawsuit? I'm not, I'm not exactly clear.
I'm very happy that you asked that council member, Lingan Felter. Did I pronounce that correctly? Lingan Felter. So these are not class cases. Each case is filed individually. However, through the nuances of federal court, all of the cases at present have been consolidated in front of one judge, Judge Polster in the Northern District of Ohio. I will give you the, hopefully not too boring, history of how this happened. So a number of cases were filed. Like I said, I think our Tacoma case was one of the first 20 or 25 cases filed in the country, but through the fall, there were over 100 cases that were filed. The federal courts realized, "Gosh, this is going to be problematic. We don't want 100 cases just all in different courts, going at different rate, da-da-da." So the, it's called the Judicial Panel on Multi-District Litigation, said, "We're going to consolidate all these in front of one judge." They chose Judge Polster, Dan Polster, who sits in the Northern District of Ohio in Cleveland. I think the reason why the JPML chose him is that he's had a number of very large cases before, and there was a perception that somehow Ohio and West Virginia were kind of ground zero for this. So at any rate, all the cases are being transferred to him, but they're all individual cases. So let's say there is a settlement, and the city of Kingman decided to participate and filed its case, but it didn't like the settlement, it thought it was, was wrong. You don't need to take that settlement. This isn't a class action, this is your case. Similarly, if you, in a year or two, became tired of this case, it's dragging on, gosh, we don't want to do it, it's fine, it's your case, you can dismiss it. You can, you can go home and no harm, no foul. If you want to get down into the weeds, the reason why, at first, we thought this was a little, we really felt these cases should stay locally, right? Because there's so many local issues involved here. But at the end of the day, I think we've been pleasantly surprised, maybe not pleasantly surprised, we've been very happy with the way that Judge Polster's been handling the case. It's actually, I think, redounded to the benefit of many of our clients. He said, "Look, I don't want," there are now over 850 cases that have been consolidated in front of Judge Polster. He said, "I don't want 850 cities and counties having to respond to discovery. I don't want, you know, mayors, et cetera, being deposed from all these places. We're going to choose three bellwether cases, Cleveland, Summit County in Ohio, and Cuyahoga County in Ohio." So they're the ones who are responding to all the discovery requests from the defendants. We're intimately involved in that. And then we'll take discovery from all of the defendants together as one. So what that's meant is, all of our clients, for the most part, have had a relatively small burden in filing these cases. We draft the complaints, we gather the information that we think we need. Typically, we think it takes our government clients between three and five hours of staff time to kind of help us gather and then review, gather documents or information and review a complaint. We do all these things on contingency fee bases, we front all of the costs, et cetera. So at any rate, so maybe that was more than you asked.
No, that answers my question. So you said that there's over 800 cases right now. Are any of those decided?
No, none of the cases have been decided. There have been a few key decisions in other cases that happened just before they were all consolidated. Happened to be one in Washington State, Judge Martinez, ruling on a motion to dismiss, Purdue was trying to get rid of the city of Everett's case, and the city of Everett, excuse me, Purdue in that case said, "Look, you know, the city of Everett has this sort of long tangled web of a story. Oh, you know, they're saying some, somebody at Purdue did something maybe bad, and then some drug dealers got involved, and then, gosh, there are these addicts on Everett's streets." And Judge Martinez said, "Hold on, let me stop you right there. I think you're exactly right. It does seem to me a lot like Purdue is a Latin American drug cartel. Tell me why you're not." Anyway, I felt a little bit bad for Purdue's lawyer at that point in time, but Judge Martinez denied the motion to dismiss, and Everett's case proceeded along. So it was a great decision, and then that case was picked up and sent to Judge Polster. But that's really about the only actual ruling on a substantive motion that any of these cases have had. Judge Polster said in his very first hearing, I apologize, I'm talking probably too much, in his very first hearing in January of this year, he said, "Look, this is a disaster. The legislative branch hasn't done anything to stem this problem, the executive branch hasn't managed to get its hands around this problem, so it's going to be up to us. I want you guys to settle this case by the end of 2018." This is the biggest litigation, you know, that we can imagine. I'm not sure how we're going to get it done by 2018, but he appointed three special masters, he has us meeting weekly, we have phone calls with him and the special masters, et cetera. So we have been in the trenches. And then he said, "Actually, if you don't settle this case, we're going to go to trial on those three bellwether cases in March of 2019," which is wildly fast. But at any rate, so that means we're going to be getting some decisions very soon if we don't ultimately settle the case before then.
Is there a financial obligation for the city to participate in this?
No, no, there isn't. Typically, the reason why our firm gets hired or outside counsel gets hired, we think, is in part because, I guess, we have the expertise, the legal expertise, but we also have the ability to take these all on on a contingency fee. So we never ask for dollars upfront. The only time that any of our clients end up paying us money is if we're successful. You're not getting bills in the mail, et cetera. And if we, obviously, if we are not successful, we're not going to come asking you for dollars. And that's all spelled out explicitly in our agreements.
Got it. I've got a question for Manager Foggan, and then perhaps our KPD, but have, do we have any sort of quantifiable numbers as far as what sort of a financial impact this has had to the city of Kingman? Because when you're going to weigh a litigation, you want to see, you want to weigh if it's worth it or not, you know?
Yes, and I know that the chief and his leadership team have been compiling information for over, well over a year now. I don't have any of that to share with you tonight, but yes, we can get you that information. I know that the opioid issue has been a hard hit for the city and the county, and I understand county-wide that this is, that this has been a big issue. So, and that's not, it doesn't just stop at the police department either, it also hits the fire department as well. So, so yeah, there are some numbers. I don't have them for you tonight, but we certainly could get them out to you.
I appreciate it, thank you. And I have no more questions. Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to add to that. I have had numerous discussions with the police chief, and the great news is, they've been very good at data collection between the city of Kingman and Mojave County. They have a great deal of the information that I know that you're going to be requesting. So that staff time has already been invested.
That's terrific.
And we have a question from Councilmember Staley.
I just wanted to add to what Manager Foggan was saying. The, Kingman has an opioid task force. It's called M-Step, which is Mojave Substance Treatment Education and Prevention Partnership, which used to be focused on all different types of drug and alcohol problems, but is really just now focused on opioids. And I have to tell you guys, those, of all the meetings I attend in this community as a council member, those are the most stressful and overwhelming. They do report the numbers every single month for overdoses, deaths, how many people are coming in to seek treatment. We have a new needle exchange program, how many people are coming in, how many of those people are seeking treatment or help from that. I sit there just overwhelmed. I mean, that's the only way to say it, at the sheer numbers of people in our community who are really struggling with the opioid addiction and how it's affecting our community. So I think it's really important that the entire council see those numbers, because they're big. And, and one other point, Vice Mayor Miles, you had asked about a treatment prevention center. Last month in the meeting, it was brought up that we do have some doctors and other providers who are ready to open a treatment center, but we don't have a facility for it. And so if we had the funding to purchase a building that could house about 15 people at a time, we'd have a treatment facility here in Kingman. So these are, these are all very serious issues, and I'm so glad that you're here tonight and that we had the other presentation. We need funding to be able to keep tackling this. We have received some grants, but it's not, it's not going to be enough until we really hit it hard. So, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Staley, I think that was really well put. And I will, just, one of the things that I have learned in my travels around being with experts, meeting with health departments, et cetera, is the, it's the critical nature of being able to offer people help when they come and ask for it. It's hard to ask for help. You know, I was meeting with a woman who's 58 years old, she has two kids in high school, she lives in a middle-class suburb of Seattle, and her, she tore her rotator cuff, her doctor prescribed her OxyContin. A year and a half later, she's wildly addicted to this stuff, driving to B.C., British Columbia to get OxyContin, she ends up getting picked up by the police there, and she just got lucky. She said, "I was, I was going to overdose, I was going to die, but I had no one to ask for help." So, you know, it's, when somebody gets the courage to come and say, "I need help," we have to be able to have the resources to give them help at that moment in time. Anyway, so I really appreciate you doing your work on this. From what I've learned is, clearly, that's a critical part of this puzzle. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to take one more comment or question from Councilmember Waite, because I know this is going to be back on the agenda later this evening, and we can have additional discussion, but we do have two more items on the work session I'd like to get to as well. Thank you. Councilmember Waite?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just had a few questions for you. You mentioned you work on a contingency fee basis. I was wondering if that contingency fee percentage is negotiated with the contract? If it's, if you have one standard contingency fee you do with all the agencies that you work with, or the cities and counties that you work with, or if it, you know, varies depending on the contract signed? Also, my other question, I guess I'll make a compounded question.
Good.
You mentioned that there are over 800 individual cases currently in, you know, before, in Ohio. Obviously, there are other firms working on other people's litigation. I was wondering if your percentages are commensurate or similar, or I guess, you know, comparable?
Sure. I think they're, I think they're probably commensurate from the agreements that I have seen. I will confess that I haven't asked to see every other firm's agreements. Our, to answer your very first question, we have a standard To answer your very first question, we have a standard agreement that we use as a starting point usually, but it's certainly not set in stone. In fact, I was just on the phone with Jefferson County yesterday negotiating parts of the contract, because they had particular concerns. I think that our agreement slides from 20% down to 10%. So the higher the recovery, the lower the percent of a recovery comes in. I think that's, I think that's unique amongst the firms that are litigating here. And you're right, there are other firms, there are probably hundreds of firms that are, that have clients in this litigation. But there are 12 firms that the judge appointed to be the plaintiff's executive committee, so that we had just 12 firms that were doing, just like you don't want 1,000 different cases going on, you don't want 1,000 different attorneys trying to figure out what's going on. So I think that's my, but what I'd be happy to do is, through Attorney Cooper, I'd be happy to send you the rep agreement, for example, that we have with Cochise County, or something along those lines. That'd be a good starting point to look. But certainly not, not set in stone by any, by any stretch of imagination.
I presume. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mensch, we'll call you back later in the agenda if there are further questions or comments from council.
Great.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Very informative. Okay, moving on to the second work session item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have the quarterly TPT update as committed to the council that we would give. So our finance director, Tina Moline, is here to walk you through the numbers.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So tonight is the second quarter, or our final, actually, for fiscal year 18, TPT collection report. It will provide a summary of our TPT collections for the taxpayer collection period of November 2017 through April of 2018, which is the city's collection period of January of 18 to June 18. We will also be providing you with fiscal year ending 18 numbers, pre-audit, of course. So, we ended up with fiscal year 18 with our retail business code being our primary contributor to those revenues. That is nothing out of the ordinary, almost 61%. Our restaurant and bars were over 15 and a half percent of the contributions to our collections. And hotels were almost 9%. Between those three categories alone, it's almost 85% or actually just over 85% of our total collections. And then the other categories bring in the other 15%. When we look at our year-to-date, year-to-date TPT collections and comparing those to fiscal year 16, 17, and 18, I have two graphs up there. One of them excludes the one additional 1%, and one includes the additional 1%. When we look at the exclusion and we compare our 18 collections to 17, we are at a 5.9% growth rate. Now, again, these are pre-audit figures. There will be some adjustments at year-end. I don't anticipate that it will change much. And so we beat fiscal year 17's growth rate by just over 1%. And of course, when we include the additional 1%, we are dramatically, it's a dramatic growth rate of 24%. Just to let you know, Will, we collected about $21.8 million in collections this year with the additional 1%. So then, of course, drilling down into the business codes, or those different categories that we mentioned in an earlier slide, looking at those comparisons between 17 and 18, you'll see that our retail category is bringing in 5.5% above where we were in 17. And as you scroll through the different categories, they're all up. And real important to point out is the construction sales tax. We see there that it's over a 22%, or almost a 22% increase. And you can look around, and that's easy to notice. And so our total for the year, that 5.91%. And of course, this excludes the additional 1% just for us to be able to baseline against last year's figures. So that 5.91% in, for total, oh, actually, this is a different slide. Sorry about that. So the January to June 2018 figures, those are also important for us to look at, because that's when the 1% increase went into effect. So just looking at those figures, we know what our total was for the year, 5.91%. Our total for January to June is about a 4.64% growth rate year over year. And that is slightly down from where we were from 16 to 17, which was a 6.89% growth rate. The biggest category, which is our retail and use category, is still, we're still growing in that category, but it is slightly down from where we were in 16 and 17, strictly for those, that six-month reporting period. So, something that is important to look at, and again, this is for the January to June reporting period, are some of the categories within that major retail and use contributing business code. And I selected five very broad categories, as you'll see on this slide. And these are five very large revenue generators in the retail business code. Actually, more than 50% of our retail and use tax comes from these five categories. So we have our motor vehicle and parts dealers. We have our durable goods wholesalers, which are electronics appliances, those sorts of things. We have our building materials and garden equipment suppliers, our food and beverage stores, and then our general merchandise stores, which is basically everything but those other categories, or most of those other categories. Fiscal year 16 is identified with the blue bar, and the yellowish-orange bar is our fiscal year 17 collections. And then 18 is the brown bar. So as we look at those five categories, and we look at what has happened in those five categories over the last six months, excluding the additional 1%, you're going to see that we do have a slight increase in our motor vehicles and parts dealers over the first six months. Our durable goods wholesalers, a much bigger increase when we look at percentage-wise anyhow. The same in our building material and garden equipment supplies. That shouldn't be a shock at all with construction booming the way that it is. Our food and beverage stores are slightly down, and we always need to think about any sort of retailers that might be under construction, or might be remodeling, or might be closed for business for a short period of time, and that is part of the reason for this decline. So if we were to have collected some of those sales, we would be above where we were in 17. So certainly nothing to be alarming about. And then general merchandise stores, we are slightly down. And that's also because of some retailers that have left the community over this reporting period. So again, nothing to be alarmed about. And then, of course, looking at our TPT collections on the 1% increase. So we had estimated that we would receive $3.1 million from that 1%, and we did. We beat that to buy just barely, about 2.4%. $3.174 million is what we collected during this period. Half of that is the half percent that's dedicated to pavement preservation, and the other half percent was capital improvement projects. And those are the dollar amounts that are deposited into each of those separate categories. So with that, I will certainly answer any questions. I do want to let you know that the next quarterly report will not only include our TPT collections, but more of a broad financial review for the first quarter of fiscal year 19 as well.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Great job, Tina. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next subject we have that we'd like to cover at Workshop with you is tourism, which is a big part of what we do every day. It's a big part of our economy. And as we work through the different aspects of the city through Workshop, one of the ones that makes the most sense is to bring you an update on tourism. And to do that is Josh Noble, is Gary, Gary not speaking? All right, the Josh Show, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan, Mayor Gates, Vice Mayor Miles, members of council. I've prepared a, well, I'll try to make a quick presentation. I know that we don't have a whole lot of time. But we're going to go over all the different things the Tourism Division does for the City of Kingman. Let me see if I can find the presentation in here. Okay. So what does tourism do? Well, we have three full-time and three part-time employees run the visitor center and the tourism efforts. This is relatively small staff size compared to comparable tourism offices that also operate a visitor center. We operate what's known as an official Arizona Local Information Center. This is important because this affords us the tourist information songs, signs along the highways and interstates the ADOT puts up. You have to meet certain requirements and provide certain services to do that. So this gives us more, more exposure than someone that just wants to go and put information up. We also publish GoKingman.com, a travel resource site. This is a content leader in information on the community and the things to do in our area. We publish and distribute a Kingman fulfillment guide, and we conduct paid advertising. We'll talk a little bit more about those in the, in the presentation. We also have a community event calendar. This is the most comprehensive event calendar for the community of Kingman. And we assist with potential and realized travelers. So this is by phone and email with the website as people are trying to find information to come here. And then also at the visitor center, we have over 100,000 people come in that we assist with finding information about the community as they come here. We assist with media, providing media assistance, and event coordination assistance, operating a gift shop, also to help offset some of our expenses. And we'll discuss that more as we go in through the slides. So we operate nine hours a day, seven days a week, 357 days a year. We are closed a few of the major holidays. The major tourism holidays, being Memorial Day and Labor Day, we remain open. When we look at other visitor centers in the area comparables, we actually, this is more hours than most visitor centers stay open, including Flagstaff, Prescott, Yuma, Lake Havasu City, Bullhead City, Laughlin, Sedona Boulder City. Look at all these communities. We actually keep more consistent hours throughout the year and throughout the week so that visitors know when they can come in. Only Williams keeps longer hours than us, and that's only during the summer months. We've welcomed, on average, over 115,000 visitors. This last fiscal year, we almost welcomed almost 136,000 visitors into the visitor center. That's an average of 379 visitors per day. We have 168 slots for brochures and informational, 36 of which are designated specifically for Kingman information. We're one of the most comprehensive visitor centers in the state of Arizona, and this is reflected in the feedback that we get from our visitors who come into the visitor center. We, in the visitor center, we have a gift shop. This helps to offset our expenses. We carry U.S.-made product that's branded Southwestern. We do want to carry more Kingman-branded product. That's something that we're currently worked on. And we also make a concerted effort not to compete with local businesses. So we try to bring in product that other people aren't carrying in the community so that people have a different offer over at the visitor center. 2018, we had over 100, or we had right on $190,000 in sales. This covered one-third of the expenses of our department, right at 33%. So it's, it's doing quite a bit to help us offset our costs, I said before. This is a 41% increase over 2017 fiscal year sales, and 118% increase over the sales two years ago in fiscal year 16. Our average profit margin is 53.8%. So that was over $102,000 in profit this last fiscal year. The reason that we've been seeing more sales in the visitor center, there's a few different factors. One, we have more floor space after the renovation that took place recently. We've also added additional staff. We, you guys put an additional part-time person in our budget last year. We added in additional registers out at the front desk. All these things have helped us to manage more sales and process more sales, so we can generate more revenue in the visitor center. And then, of course, we've also received more visitation in recent years. The visitor center operates inside the powerhouse. The powerhouse opened in October of 1997, so we're coming up in 21 years right now. Inside the powerhouse is the visitor center and the Arizona Route 66 Association, which both of them were in the visitor center as it opened. Route 66 Association, of course, has contributed to multiple renovations to the visitor center, right from the museum to the most recent renovation that we had in 2017, 18. The Arizona Route 66 Museum, which opened in September of 2001, and we have information that's translated into six different languages for visitors that are coming in, and they want to experience the museum, but they can't read the displays. We have that, both imprinted pieces and online, in French, Spanish, German, Dutch, Japanese, and Chinese, and we're currently working on Italian. The Electric Vehicle Museum, which opened in December of 2014 after we hosted the International Route 66 Festival. Grand Canyon Resort Corporation also has a tech office in the visitor center. That's nice for us, because that gives us a point of connection with Grand Canyon West and what they're doing, and keeps a good partnership going. And then, of course, we have the conference room that was opened in 2017. We do have one vacant suite in the powerhouse right now. So what are people saying about the visitor center and the powerhouse? Right now, our Google Business rating is about 4.4 stars out of five. Most of them are threes, fours, and fives. People are saying that it's a great place to rest on the trip, their restrooms during your tours, to gift shops, great friendly staff. Those are just the most recent reviews when we pulled that screenshot off of Google's business page. Our Facebook rating is 4.8 out of 5 stars, 42 reviews, everything from 3 stars up. And we're also getting a lot of positive feedback from people visiting our Facebook page. And then in TripAdvisor, we have a rating of about 4.5 out of 5. A lot of good feedback we get from here, and you'll see that a lot of people don't know the difference between the different entities in the building. They all look at the building as a single unified experience, which we think is a positive thing. So you'll see 5 stars for Arizona Route 66 Museum. That's a comment, although it's on our business page. Great welcome to the Southwest Attractions, 5 stars. Many great items to see, 5 stars. Zerrn Formative, of course, that's German, very informative, 4 stars. Kingman Powerhouse Visitor Center, naming all the businesses, 5 stars. Must Stop, 5 stars. Travel information for all of Arizona. As I said, we have one of the most comprehensive visitor centers in the state. We are a welcoming visitor center for people coming in from California and from Nevada. So we're, we are a good ambassador for the state of Arizona. There are tourism marketing initiatives. Obviously, we do more than just run a visitor center. A lot of what we do is through the Arizona Office of Tourism Marketing Cooperative, but overall, we have printed material distributed with certified folder distribution. We have over 100,000 Kingman fulfillment guides that we distributed over, at 764 locations along the Colorado River, on I-40 from Gallup to Barstow, and up in the Las Vegas area, as well as sending out to lead requests for people asking for information on Kingman. And then the Kingman Dining Map, we have 50,000 to 60,000 that we print every year, and we distribute those in Kingman, Barstow Visitor Center, and at the Laughlin Mall. We also have social media profiles on Facebook and Twitter. We'll get into that later. Print advertising. We, we don't have a huge budget, so we try to really select our marketing that's going to give us the largest coverage, or really target where visitors are coming in at, so that we can try and target people and tell them what Kingman's about. Online advertisements, and we'll get into that as we go in through the presentation as well. Then we have partnerships such as the Arizona Route 66 Passports, the Northern Arizona Visitor Guide, which was a co-op with Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City. And we have subscribers to our website that we can send email blasts to. We have over 2,700 subscribers as of right now. Of course, we also attend trade shows and conferences. So for instance, we're going to be attending the Route 66 Festival in Europe, along with Mr. Henkley, next month. But we also go to American Bus Association Marketplace, or we'll go to National Tour Association Travel Exchange, or Arizona Media Marketplace. We usually go to about two shows a year, depending on what our budget allows for. The Arizona Office of Tourism Rural Marketing Cooperative is where we make most of our ad buys, simply because the Arizona Office of Tourism vets all the marketing opportunities. They put out RFPs, and they collect bids, and they try to select what's the best fit for the state. They also buy anchor ads in all the different marketing opportunities, which helps extend the reach, and they cover half the cost. So you can buy in with up to $50,000, which gives us up to $100,000 in marketing value for, for our buy-in. This year, we applied for $49,847,050 in marketing buys, so we'll get over $99,000 of ad value out of those marketing buys. When we try to evaluate our marketing initiatives, we really try to get good input on what marketing and what media buys are successful. Sojourn, this is a report from Sojourn last year on what our marketing did. So this is a better example than some, but this is really epitomizes the type of information we try to get back to show that we're getting a good return on our, on our investment. So from our ad buys, this was an online media campaign, and we showed media ads to people that were looking at traveling, and particularly looking at the Grand Canyon, Arizona. And people who saw those ads, there were pixels embedded into those ads, and those basically put cookies on their different devices. And then the Sojourn could track where they were going to next, and they could see, okay, people are going, they're looking for booking hotels, or booking flights, or renting a rental car. And they have actual confirmations of how many of those pages people are going through. And we can see, yes, there were people that were going, and they were making bookings, and they were coming out into this area. and they were coming out into this area. And then if you look at specifically how far out people were booking, all those little squares, that's, uh, showing from February out into September, the dates that people were actually booking their departures, um, through this marketing program. This doesn't include just Kingman, this is all the Arizona pieces, but it was basically February, March, April is when all of the Arizona Office of Tourism ad buys went in, and you can see that, um, this actually had quite a bit of reach. It was very strong going March, April, May, June, even all the way into, uh, September where people were making their bookings. So that helps to give us an idea of if we market, how far in, are out are we reaching travelers? We also provide media assistance. So we are the de facto film office for the city of Kingman. We suggest story ideas and itineraries. We provide images, contacts, resources, um, press interviews, radio, TV, on blogs. And then we also assist with, uh, familiarization tours. This could be set up by the Arizona Office of Tourism, um, or, or other groups that are bringing people in to try and show them a little bit about what Kingman and the area have to offer. And we provide meal and room assistance, and this could be out of, directly out of our budget for travel writers, or this could be, uh, working with partners to get sponsorships to sponsor hotel room nights and, and meal assistance. Some examples is with Las Vegas PBS out in North Nevada. We hosted them at the museum in November, um, of last year. We spent about three and a half hours going through touring, uh, the host through the museum, going back, taking several different takes, giving them some background information, and that will be, um, coming in an upcoming segment this year. We also had a film crew out of France, TF1 Automotive. They're working on a, a TV show that was aligned with the Laughlin River Run, so they were getting motorcyclists were coming through, and we toured them through the powerhouse, through the Electric Vehicle Museum, and showed them, uh, what we had in, in Kingman. We also were assisting with a crew that was working on an episode for a TV show that streamed on Amazon Prime. I can't go into any more details on that. There's, um, that's all kind of behind the scenes. Um, then also with a major cable network, again, I can't go into any details on that, and those were both last month. Also, the National Park Service that are working on a Route Sixty-Six National Scenic Trail Designation Documentary, and they came through and we, uh, toured them through the powerhouse. So in evaluating media assistance, again, we have to know whether, um, our resources that we're putting in are justified, our time, um, our, our budget if we're buying meals and hotels. So a lot of, a lot of the, uh, different, uh, opportunities, you can actually go back and you look, you can look at circulation, or you can look at social media influencers, followers, their reach, and you can gauge, yes, this, this makes sense, and this would be a good opportunity for us, but not with all cases. So with some websites, with some TV shows, it can be difficult to, um, figure out whether or not we're getting a value out of, um, the resources, resources we're putting in. So one of the, uh, one of the things that I use to evaluate is the Global Alexa Page Rank. This is a service provided by Amazon. Um, they'll actually go through and try to rank webpages based on the highest traffic. So Google is ranked number one, YouTube is ranked number two, Facebook is ranked number three, all the way down to, here's a quarter call, someone who cares dot com is ranked a hundred million. So you, you really get a good idea by looking at that page rank. If, if their, uh, page is getting a lot more traffic than your page or other sources that you find to be valuable, then you know you're getting a good fit. So for instance, the Automotive, um, the TF1 dot FR, uh, dot France, that's, that, uh, uh, film crew that we took through the powerhouse, they released the video. You can watch it up on their, their webpage. It also aired in France. They had a global ranking of twenty-three hundred and nine, and in France, that FR, the number forty-four, that means they're the number forty-four website rated in France. They have over eighty-three hundred websites linking in to their website. Okay, so that's interesting, but how do we then gauge and look at that as comparables? Well, the History Channel has a similar, similar global ranking at twenty-three hundred and ninety versus the twenty-three hundred and nine. So we know that globally it has about the same ranking as the History Channel, and then in France, the ranking of forty-three is comparable to Fox News ranking of, uh, forty-three in America. So that gives us some sort of idea of how much that investment was worth in getting exposure for Kingman. So with the, uh, uh, we also have, um, social media that we participate in. And of course, I've, I've got a couple typos in here, so I apologize. Kingman Visitor Center, Facebook, that's not nine thousand four hundred and forty-four followers, it's nine thousand four hundred and forty-four likes. So when you look at Facebook, you not only want to have a lot of likes, but you also want to have a follow, a reach, um, how many people you're, you're actually reaching. So if you've ever been on Facebook and you see something, you're like, oh, I don't want to see any more of that, and you say, unfollow this. You didn't unlike that person or that page or that entity, but you stopped following them. Um, we actually have, uh, as of today, uh, ninety-five hundred and sixty likes, ninety-three hundred and nineteen follows. So it's a ninety-seven point five percent follower rate. So it's a very good follower rate. We have a lot of engagement. Andy Devine Days Festival, um, seventy-six hundred and seventy-eight likes, and we have a ninety-eight point four percent follower rate. And on Twitter, we have forty-two hundred and ninety-seven followers. So Twitter's not used as extensively with individuals, but what it is used for are travel writers, bloggers, people looking for story ideas. So it's real important to keep an exposure on Twitter so that people know about Kingman, and they might find us to, um, write a story or come up with ideas on, on, uh, different, different topics. And then we have an Instagram, and this is more of a fledgling, actually, the reason we started our Instagram page is part of our website. At the bottom of the page, we have what we call Image Swarm, and that pulls images that are tagged with location ideas of our area attractions and points of interest. So we basically have an up-to-date revolving photo album on all the different activities that are already doing in Kingman. And so we had some activities that didn't have a lot of images, so we built the Instagram page so we can go out and we can tag White Close Wagon Trail and, and different things. And so that's why we have that out there, so that'll pull up onto those. And actually, if you go to our website, I apologize, right now it's not showing up. Facebook recently had, um, their security, uh, breach, and they've been making some changes, so we are working with our web company right now to pull that back in and populate all those pages with that. So how does our website, um, do? Um, we, uh, we launched it in May of two thousand and twelve, and then we relaunched it in two thousand and sixteen to be a dynamic site so that it would auto-adjust to the, uh, screen size. We work with a Salt Lake, uh, Salt Lake City-based, uh, travel, uh, website developing company called Go Travel Sites. Um, actually, right now, they're working on, on the website for Lake Havasu City, so we're in good company, um, with, with this group, and they're very responsive for us. We've had over a fifth of a million visitors in the last twelve months, and over thirty percent of those visitors are coming to our, uh, our pages about our events. So the events calendar is a very important aspect to our website. We have four, over four, or we had four hundred and eighty events published in two thousand and seventeen on GoKingman.com, and, uh, not only are those events published on the website, we also send that out to publications, to, uh, uh, hotelers, and, uh, the clerk's office always, also forwards that out. So if you see the two-week event forecast, that's what that's about, is the event information that we collect. So our website, I guess, let's see here, it's the next slide. How do we rank on our Alexa? Well, we've, we're about not, five hundred and ninety thousand, um, eighty-eight thousand for, um, the, uh, the, uh, country. And how that compares to other sites, you can see we're actually tracking ahead of Flagstaff, um, ahead of the city's, uh, general website. We're about on par with Lake Havasu. Um, we're about half the tracked ranking of the Arizona Office of Tourism's website at VisitArizona.com. And also sites linking in, we have three hundred and eighty sites linking in. That's actually more than any one of these comparables. Um, of course, KingmanDailyMinor.com, uh, is doing better than any one of these, but they put quite a bit into, um, their online presence and getting, uh, people to the website for their, um, business. Event involvement and coordination, of course, we, um, uh, coordinate the Andy Devine Days in September with the assistance of a lot of different departments in the city, and then we're heavily involved in the Route Sixty-Six Fun Run. Uh, we do some other events as they come up, such as partnering with the Main Street Group to do the Kingman Arch Dedication, which we had, uh, just a couple weeks ago, and had over fourteen hundred participants from the community come out to that. Surveys and data collection, we, we collect a lot of data to try to help make us, uh, help us make our marketing decisions and figure out where, what the trends are and where people are coming in from. Um, so at the visitor center itself, visitor center traffic, group tour traffic, guestbook entries, all of that, and we'll go over that in a minute. Also, we, uh, we have visitor information packet requests, the leads that are coming in where people are, are finding out about us, web analytics and Facebook insights, um, hotel performance, this is occupancy, average daily room rate, um, then hotel surveys. So in two thousand and ten, eleven, we worked with Arizona Office of Tourism, and we did a community visitor survey. Then we went on our own in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we did another twelve-month survey to try to get some information on where people are coming in from. And then we do comparable trend tracking. So this is regional hotel performance, attraction, visitation, airport deployments, um, to try to, to gather a little bit more insight. So for instance, this is our walk-in traffic from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. It was July of seventeen to June of eighteen. It's a heat map, so in the middle there, you'll see, uh, November, December, January, the start of February is red. That's kind of our slowest season. That little, uh, green blip of twenty-five hundred and fifteen, that's the Route Sixty-Six Fun Run. That is by far our busiest day of the year. Um, but this, we, we actually have this going back to two thousand and five, so we have over ninety-five hundred individual entries of data from, um, those twelve, thirteen years, trying to figure out where people are coming, or when people are coming in and when our peak seasons are, both with individual travelers and with, uh, group tours. Then guestbook data, um, so we've, we collect, uh, the information that people sign in when they enter the guestbook, and I see I'm, I'm getting the note here that we're running through on time, so I'll try and go through this a little quicker. Um, but you'll see that, uh, we track every state, so California, Arizona, Nevada, Texas, Florida. Um, we get, uh, those are our top states, and then internationally, Canada, France, Germany, Australia. Um, and, and here, China is our number eight, uh, uh, country, but actually in two thousand and eighteen, it's, it's trending up to number two or number three. So we're getting a lot more visitors coming in. And then you, when you see the totals at the bottom there, that's actually our exclusivity. So if they only checked Grand Canyon, twenty-five percent of our visitors only checked Grand Canyon, nineteen only Las Vegas. They're actually much higher for those that selected multiple ones. So forty-three percent of our visitors overall checked Grand Canyon, fifty-four percent overall Route Sixty-Six, thirty-three percent overall Las Vegas, and that pretty much holds true two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen as well. So this is only a sample data. I, I don't actually have the rights to distribute our hotel data, although on an individual basis or in a manager meeting, we can look at our, our hotel performance. Um, but we are, one thing that I wanted to put in is we are trying to look at, uh, analyzing our, uh, visitor, um, the hotel data and see how that compares to, uh, the building permits and the business activity to try to figure out how much of our hotel occupancy is from tourists and how much of it might be from business activity. The hotel survey, I'm just going to run through this a little more quickly. Um, so some interesting highlights, thirty-eight percent of our visitors, these are the people who overnighted. So obviously, we collect information in the visitor center from people who are passing through. We can look at Facebook, and we can look at our website and get an idea for who's looking at coming to Kingman, but this really lets us know who is staying the night and who's spending the money, the dollars here. What was really interesting is, uh, the younger generations, Gen X, Y, and Z, was much higher, um, reporting fifty-nine, fifty-six, and forty-two percent that they were coming to visit the Grand Canyon. Route Sixty-Six was marked as a destination in thirty-two percent, but twice that said that they were doing Route Sixty-Six as part of their experience. So they may have not said, that's my destination, but they said, yes, we're participating as an activity. And then also eighteen percent marked Kingman as their destination or one of the destinations. And that was, interestingly, also higher for younger generations, uh, Z and Y. So it's young families, um, that are traveling, coming through. Activities of Interest, obviously Route Sixty-Six, scenic drive, sightseeing, we are a drive market, so those are all high on the list. Museums, Kingman is rich in history, so that's more than half. Um, shopping, photography, and hiking were all more important to younger travelers. And what also was kind of interesting is traditional tourism activities such as golf, spas, horseback, and those were very low on the interest list. Uh, foodie tourism, I think as we develop that, we're going to see more of that. In the two thousand and ten, eleven survey, that hardly was a blip, and we're seeing twenty, fifteen, and eleven percent. So as we develop that, that's continuing to grow. Event interest, uh, living history, live music festivals, um, those were all really, really high. Car shows was about, uh, about twenty-five percent. What's interesting is the highest one here was actually Gen Y at thirty-one percent. Gen X was only seventeen. So it, we, we see that as developing into a new interest for younger travelers, which is a good thing. I'm just going to kind of pass over some of these. So one of the things that we do is we, we use Microsoft Power BI, that's Bill, Business Intelligence, to track deployments, area airports, visitation of the Grand Canyon National Park, Las Vegas, as well as Kingman, and hotel performance in Las Vegas and Kingman and Arizona to try to figure out how we're comparing with other, um, communities around us. So this is a, uh, these are monthly moving indices. So we're taking the averages from two thousand and six to two thousand and seventeen, and we're combining those down so that we can get an index, and we can compare big numbers with little numbers. The, uh, the gray and the black, that's kind of going up towards the top along with the red, that's our Kingman, um, hotel performance. That's the revenue per available room, and that's our, our, uh, room tax collections. The red is the state of Arizona's. So you can see they're overall going up in the same direction, but what we're seeing is that we have a little bit different seasons. So Arizona Office of Tourism, they're really peaking in the winter and spring. We're really peaking in the summer and fall. Um, these are unadjusted, uh, real numbers, I, you could say, um, for, uh, the, uh, Kingman visitors, the ho, uh, and hotel, uh, numbers versus the visitors at Grand Canyon National Park, Laughlin, and Las Vegas. So the one that peaks up the highest, that's the orange color, that's Grand Canyon National Park. And you can see they have a very high visitation in the summer, very low visitation in the winter. And the numbers just below that, that's our visitors at the Kingman Visitor Center and our occupancy. And then these are seasonally adjusted numbers, um, for the, uh, visitors, and this is basically the same exact data, but we're seasoning them out. They're smoothing the data so we can really try and decipher, you know, what's going on. And what's interesting is the very middle there, you'll see that one, um, orange kind of blip under the one line that's going, um, all the way across at the bottom, and that's Laughlin, the one going all the way at the bottom. That's October of two thousand and thirteen. That's when the Nash, uh, the government had their national shutdown, and people couldn't go to the Grand Canyon. And the other number that shoots up just after that, the green number, that's our visitation. What's interesting is, it seemed like after the national park shutdown, we had a lot of tour operators that couldn't fulfill what they promised they were going to do on their tours, and they were discovering other things, and it was a real boost for Kingman, for Route Sixty-Six, for travelers discovering something new when they were just going the same old same old, going to the national park. And this, this is my last slide, um, so I promise, Mr. Fogg, and we're, we're almost done here. Um, this, this is looking at the, uh, the Kingman Room Tax, which is the green. That's kind of spiking up towards the top. Deplanements, LAX, that's the black line that's going along with that green line. And then the lower lines are, uh, the purple is McCarran Deplanements, and the yellow is our occupancy. And to kind of tease out what's going on here, you have to step a little bit into, uh, Councilmember Lincoln Felter and Mr. Kellogg's world and look at economics somewhat. There's some inelasticity in demand with visitors that are deplaning in LAX. Kingman is a gas tank away. So even as our room revenue, our room prices are going up a little bit, the people that are coming in from LA aren't deterred from coming this far because this is about as far as they can come before they're going to do their next stop or coming in, and now they can do their Route Sixty-Six adventure. They can continue on to the Grand Canyon. The visitor, uh, the numbers below when you're looking at McCarran, it is going up, just not at the same rate, and we're, we're not seeing that same, um, influence in Kingman because, um, they have more choices in the area. They don't have to travel as far to do their next stop. Um, so that, that's just a little bit of information on, on what we've been doing at the visitor center. I'll say that when we looked at this data and we tried to figure out what's going on here and what made the correlation be, and we recognized China was becoming our number two spot, and we also recognized that LAX was the top import, uh, uh, airport for Chinese visitors. Some forty-six percent of Chinese visitors are coming into LAX as their point of entry. We realized that's probably a big, um, impact, and that's a big reason why we're, uh, why we're getting a lot of our, uh, hotel numbers and our visitor numbers coming in. And so we adjusted some of our marketing. We actually participated in a Chinese New Year map that Arizona Office of Tourism had put out, something we didn't initially plan on doing. In our, uh, current fiscal year budget, we put in to, uh, do some, uh, China marketing that we haven't, um, done in the past. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. That's a very comprehensive report. Could you kindly let us know, what would be the simplest way for the general public to access this report?
Um, I think it's on the city of Kingman's website, and if, if they can't find it there, they can email me at, uh, jnoble@cityofkingman.gov, and I can make it available.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Did you have something?
Yeah, I did. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Thirty-five slides of a whole lot of data, uh, and I have a lot of questions that, um, were not addressed. So if we could bump this again to the next meeting, I, I'd like to bring this issue back on tourism and ask those questions, because I don't think we're going to have time to do that tonight, so.
Absolutely, and, and apologize.
And apologize not exactly knowing what the workshop would, would end up looking like. So I appreciate Josh crusading through those slides, and we will definitely get time for some questions.
Thank you.
Could I ask one brief question?
Sure. Go ahead.
It's very noteworthy that the Route 66 destination was so important for such a large percentage of people. So would you comment just briefly on the Preserve Route 66 event and, and how people can sign on electronically, or I guess in Kingman, to support having Route 66 become a national historic trail?
Yes, so we have, actually, there is a, National Park has a, a traveling group that'll be coming through, collecting petitions for people to sign and have it put on the National Historic Trail designation. I believe it's Sunday, the 29th of this month. They'll be stopping in the powerhouse between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock, and they can sign the petitions there. They can see all the information that they have available. It'll be, it should be a fun event. We're going to have people from all over the community. And they do have a website that you can go on. I, I don't know it by heart, but you can Google it and you can find it. I did earlier today, and you can, you can sign the petition online there as well.
Thank you. That would really add to our tourism capacity, wouldn't it?
It absolutely would.
Be a national trail.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Okay, Karen Nunn, it's 6:58. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We will reconvene the regular business meeting in two minutes.
One minute.
I went out to the...
Well, at work, give everyone a chance to sit down.
Ready? It's 7:00. Everybody ready?
Good evening. We'll call this regular meeting of the Common Council to order. No need for roll call. Would, the invocation this evening will be given by Peter Ernst of Family Bible Church. Kindly stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you for your divine providence in giving us the privilege to live in this great American experiment. Thank you for these United States of America. We know that to whom much is given, much will be required. We're a privileged people to be able to live free in this constitutional republic. We know that the Word of God tells us that where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty. We understand that liberty and freedom has a price tag, and that each and every generation has to fight anew for that liberty, sometimes with its own lifeblood. Once freedom is lost, it will never return. And so we give thanks to you as our Creator, for life, for liberty, and for the pursuit of happiness. We give thee thanks for watching over us when much of our nation has sought to expel you from the schoolhouse, the courthouse, and the White House. Help us tonight, as decisions will be made that will affect us all. Give wisdom to our mayor and city council. Protect those who serve us. Watch over our county, our country, our, our community, and help us to seek what is right over what is convenient. Continue to guide us to that moral compass you've put into each one of our hearts, and help us to do better in leaving behind us a greater legacy for our children and grandchildren. To these lofty ends, we humbly pray. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
First order of business tonight is approval of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes to approve. Regular meeting minutes of June 5th, special meeting minutes of June 19, special meeting minutes of June 19, and regular meeting minutes of June 19. If anyone on council has any additions, changes, or corrections, if not, I will entertain to approve, a motion to approve all set, all four sets of minutes as presented.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item two, appointments. Two A, appointments to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. At the February 20th, 2018, regular meeting of the City Council passed ordinance number 1857, creating the Economic Development Advisory Commission. The commission is to be comprised of representatives from seven sectors. Downtown, financial services, manufacturing, marketing, tourism, retail, and workforce development. Staff recommends appointment of Barb Sharon, Eugene Kirkham, Alessandra Reynolds, James Hinckley, Mary Mendela, John Hanson, Kenneth Dutton, and Paul Schmidt. I wanted to point out to council, we additionally, I think there was one application that may have been overlooked that should be in front of you. Okay? And I, I asked the City Clerk's office, and thank you very, very much for creating this sheet, so that we have all the names in front of us. So may I start by asking, are there any commission applicants in the audience this evening that would wish to address the council at this time? If you could keep your comments limited to, to three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Gene Kirkham. I've been on several commissions. In the past, I've been on three separate commissions in King, in California. When I moved to Kingman, I started putting in applications in. I was put on Transit Authority Board, CART, for two years, I believe. Then I was appointed to the Planning Commission for almost three years, and then I went on EDMC, which is the, the one that was dissolved to, to make this one. I'm a, I'm a pretty active commissioner. I don't sit around and just come in the chamber and vote. You know, I, I, just one example, when we were getting ready to put on, to go to ICSC a couple of years ago, I volunteered my time for about two months, come in every Thursday to make telephone calls, so we could set up appointments and not just go there and just rummage around. And we set up appointments for two different groups. The mayor was in one group, and I was in another, and we went from meeting to meeting to meeting. I thought it was, it went pretty well. Without an economic development director, it kind of fell apart, but now we don't have that problem because we have Mr. Kellogg. And I would very much like to be included in this. As you know, I do a lot of community work, too. I own Chill and On Beal, along with my friend, or my partner, Ken Conaway. We bring a lot of people in. We, we also host a lot of different tour groups that come through, put on events for them. In October, we always have one tour group come in from Chicago. They bring in about, I think this year, going to have about 55 cars. Chill and On Beal will be October 6th, and we will have that group, which is Craig Peril's group. We have another group that's coming in from California, which is about 30 cars. So we'll have a big event October 6th. And, and all those people will be staying overnight, along with a lot of other ones that we brought in, stay overnight. I run a business, Chill and On Beal, on downtown, and I work with tourism, and I hope to be appointed to this commission, if possible. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you very much. Other applicants?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenny Dutton. Fairly new to this community. Been here for five years. Have a background in business and IT. Moved out here from North Carolina, and from the moment I pretty much entered this community, it's just embraced me. So would really perk my interest about becoming a part of the Economic Development Group is just my need of just wanting to give back. Like I said, I moved out here, didn't even know where Kingman was five years ago, and now I'm very happy to call it home. A lot of friends from back east who never even had an idea of what this place is, now they know what it is, and they kind of associate me with Kingman now. So I just hope to give some of my expertise, some of my experiences, to this committee, and hopefully don't disappoint anyone who points me to this position.
Thank you very much. Other applicants? Mr. Hanson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Hanson, I'm the Director, Chairman, President, I'm not sure, a lot of different names, but our Kingman and Mojave Manufacturing Association got a real deep interest. We started KAMA back in 2011, got a real deep interest in how we can make manufacturing work for our county. I believe that manufacturing, along with tourism, is one of the true talents that we have in Kingman. It's one of those gifts from God, if you will, that, that we have, that we should be able to capitalize on. So that's our, that's our aim in KAMA. It will be my aim as part of this Economic Development Commission to represent that manufacturer voice. So I would appreciate the chance to be able to do that. Once again, I think that it is one of the most important prospective future points of our community, and like to see us be able to take advantage of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Sixta?
Mayor, Council. My name is Deborah Sixta, and I'm passionate about Kingman. I am a commercial broker. I send out between 10 and 20 packets promoting Kingman every month, and the response lately has been amazing. I was first appointed to the Economic Development and Tourism by, okay, public speaking is not my thing, so I'll just try here. John Salem appointed me in 2004. I sat on that commission for six years. I had the opportunity, I had to leave because of personal issues in my life, but I was asked again, beginning of the year, if I would like to take a seat at the table again, which I did, and was appointed by council. And then they, Mr. Bacon told me they were going to put the, the two groups together, and I should just stand down for a minute, and they would let me know what was happening. And then yesterday, I saw that the advisory committee had already met and that I wasn't being suggested. But I want to say that I'm for Kingman, and I want to be on this commission.
Thank you very much. Other applicants? You'll be next, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon or evening. I'm Barb Sharon. I am excited to be considered for this Economic Development Board. I am not only in love with Kingman, but want to make steady progress towards positive growth. I believe that Kingman is only as strong as the sum of all of its parts, and in this commission, I believe that though I would ultimately represent downtown, I'm for full advantage of Kingman growing in all parts, and excited to help with this process if elected. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Should have sat in the front row instead of the back row. My name's Paul Schmidt. I own Pop Murphys here in town, and also in Lake Havasu and Fort Mojave. My wife and I moved here about four years ago, moved 1,800 miles from a small town in southern Minnesota. While in that town, I was in your possession, I was on city council for six years. I was a member of the bar board, Economic Development Committee, planning and zoning. So I know where you're coming from, what your objectives are. And of all the three towns that my stores are in, the reason we moved to Kingman is Kingman felt the most like home. And I want to do what I did at my previous home in Minnesota, do what I can to make it grow. I was also on volunteer firefighter back then, too, but had to leave all that to come down here. I'm hoping I can get pointed on the board. I know with my experience, I can do some good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other applicants?
Mayor Gates and council members. My name is Ally Reynolds, and I've lived in Kingman now for 24 years. I really love this town. We came here originally from, actually, I came from Detroit originally, but anyway, long story. I've always lived in a big city. I really treasure Kingman because of its uniqueness. A little background, I'm a graduate of Michigan State University. I've managed a three-office real estate company. I have served on the boards of several organizations. You know, with the Association of Realtors, I negotiated the loan, I renegotiated the loan on the building that they were about to lose, so that they could pay it off in a timely manner, and they now own that building free and clear. I also served on many community, community organizations in positions from a board member up to president. I've been involved at the state level and actually national level for some of those And there was something I wanted to tell you, but I don't remember what it was. My reason for wanting to be on this commission, oh, I wanted you to know that I've also served on the Planning and Zoning Commission here in Kingman and on the Economic Development Commission that was dissolved about a year ago, I'm guessing now. My reason for wanting to serve on this organization is that I would like to help guide the city to grow in a positive manner and positive direction, and assist in bringing new businesses and increased tourism, and making our city the most desirable place for people to live.
Thank you very much. Are there any other applicants in the audience? Yes, sir.
Hello, and good evening. I dropped off an application and also a pamphlet. I'm not sure if they were passed out. Yeah, that's it.
Be sure. Yes?
Yeah, I didn't know exactly what the presentation and what we'd be talking about, so I'll just kind of go through it kind of quickly since we only have three minutes. My name is Steve LaSueur. I'm a resident of Kingman and also a business owner here. I have two retail stores here, one in Bullhead and one coming to Havasu in about a month. I also own a marketing company. The pamphlet in front of you is, the first four pages are the businesses that I currently manage, their websites, and the majority of them are social media and digital strategy, which is really important. One of the ones in there is also a business I own, The Bee, which is a digital news media company. The reason why I applied to be on the commission was to bring more of a digital perspective to marketing and advertising, something that I think that most communities lack. Most, like larger communities or large businesses, they sit on a lot of traditional advertising channels. They're slow to adopt quick digital changes. I'm also on the board of directors down in Bullhead and have been for the last four years, and grew their website and digital strategy so that they're actually growing now as a chamber versus sitting stagnant. When you look at all those businesses on the first four pages, those are ones that I manage the digital strategies for. A lot of them are in Kingman, a lot in Bullhead, and there's a few that are still up in Maine, where I came from. On the very last page is kind of the secret sauce to why it's important to work with digital. When you're looking at that and you read the very first top line, this is just recently, one week, the amount of people who saw the content that I've been publishing with Jim Hinckley, myself, and a team of people down in Bullhead with The Bee, reached 384,000 people. It trends us out throughout the year, over 20 million people. And these aren't just views, so that's really a tough thing for people to understand in digital. These aren't just an ad, whoops, sorry, an ad going across the screen. These... These numbers are actually engagement statistics. Engagement means that someone saw the content, stopped what they were doing, and interacted with the content. That's a lot different. Bringing that on such a larger scale is something I think that municipalities need, organizations need, businesses need. If you look at the very bottom one, The Bee, 270,000 people in a week, The Bee's reach is also reaching 40 countries, along with Promote Kingman Initiative that I run with Jim Hinckley's America. So it brings kind of an all-encompassing digital strategy that I think is lacking. So that's the reason why I applied. So, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience fill out an application? I think we will all agree that it's really, really impressive that so many very busy, successful people are willing to take the time to help the city of Kingman in their economic development efforts. And thank you all for taking the time to fill out the application, and those that were able to be here this evening for speaking to us. So, Council, you have a sheet in front of you, and I think we were very successful last time, rather than going down one by one. If you could just go ahead and mark your preferences, and we'll submit this to the city clerk for a tally. Is that okay? Seven choices, yes.
There are eight recommendations.
Yes, so I didn't know if that was an alternative. Right. I thought it was seven choices, but you had eight recommendations? Help me out. I thought the commission was for seven.
Yeah, the commission's seven, we have eight recommendations. The recommendations, I guess, I'm sorry.
Let me turn on my microphone. So the recommendations were just based on the application and what the criteria the council had set, and what they, who they wanted to serve on the board. So there were one additional persons put on there, just in case there was any desire to have, you know, somebody a little bit different. So that was just staff, as that was not an intention, I just want to say. I know there was a suggestion that somebody had met, no one had met, that was just staff going through the applications and pulling out what the council had wanted for each of the commissioners.
The sectors? Thank you very much.
Yep.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Staff made the recommendations that it did prior to at least the one commissioner's application being in, did it not?
That's correct.
So staff could not recommend that particular applicant?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you circling that? I'm just kidding. Just pass them down. I was going to say pencils down. As the city clerk is finishing tallying, I once again want to say thank you to everyone that filled out, took the time to fill out that application, and please know that we have lots of boards and commissions. We're always looking, and we're very appreciative of people that are willing to contribute their time and talent to help the city of Kingman.
Okay. The seven by tally are Barb Sharon, Deborah Sixta, Jean Kirkham, Jim Hinckley, John Hanson, Mary Mendola, and Steve Lassur.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our new commission members. All right. City will be in touch to talk about dates and times, Mr. Fogg?
That is correct. Mr. Kellogg and his staff will be reaching out, and we will set our first meeting.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you all for applying. Yes, wait, go ahead. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the candidates as read by the city clerk. Can you reread those, Sidney, please?
Barb Sharon, Deborah Sixta, Jean Kirkham, Jim Hinckley, John Hanson, Mary Mendola, and Steve Lassur.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing not all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item three, this is the standing-room-only group. Awards/Recognition: The Fire Department New Hire and Promotional Badge Pinning. The Kingman Fire Department has promoted and or hired numerous positions in the last couple of months. The promotional and hiring processes are complete, and the official badge pinning and introduction of dispatch center employees to the city council and to the community. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I first apologize for the length of the list. We've been busy, I can say that. And for one, we lost Porter Williams, who retired earlier this year. And when a man such as Porter retires, you go right down the line, so about four promotions whenever he retires. So it's interesting, it's always a fun night. Tonight's always a lot of fun for us, because a lot of families, a lot of tradition, pride, professionalism come out. And in this group, you're going to see, this is not only the current, but the future of the Fire Department. As our department works towards our 100-year anniversary in a couple of years, this is the group that really, there's a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of professionalism in this group. I couldn't be more proud. And with recognizing them, I'd also recognize everyone else that's here. So if you're here for the Fire Department tonight, I'd like you to stand up really As you can see, one big family, and I apologize after, because it always gets loud, it always gets rowdy. So we'll make our way out front. I always apologize for that. So after we're done, we'll move our way out front. But what a great night, because this is our tradition, this is our pride, and we always take a lot of passion in what we do in this. So I couldn't be more proud of this group. And since Keith never lets me do this part, it takes Keith and Chris, Chris and his little basket of badges, so he gets to stand here tonight and participate. So I'll turn this part over to Keith and Chris to announce all the members tonight.
I hope you guys are loud and rowdy. They deserve it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We'll keep this as quick as possible, but I'll echo Chief Rhodes' sentiments a while ago, Ben. We appreciate you guys allowing us to do this in front of you as well. Our first badge being pinned tonight is for Promotion to Battalion Chief, Mike Stapleton. Tonight, he's being pinned by his wife Nicole and daughter Harper. As Porter Williams has retired, Mike's come in, Mike's taken over C-shift as the shift I think she just doesn't want to see mommy stick daddy with a pin, more than anything. All right, our next promotion is also to Battalion Chief, Jack Jaeger. He's being pinned tonight by his wife, Deana. You may recognize Jack. Jack came to us from Golden Valley. He was a former fire chief out there, decided to come up and join us, and we're very happy to have Jack with us. I think she's done this before. Thanks, guys. Our next promotion is to Captain. The captain is Brian Nar. He's being pinned by his wife, Ray. Brian has risen kind of quickly up through the ranks, and we're very proud to have Brian as one of our newest captains. Well, that's a record. Our next promotion is Promotion to Engineer, is Jeff Gilbert. He's being pinned tonight by his mother, Kim. Our next promotion is also to Engineer, to Tim Sloan. He's being pinned by his fiancee, Taylor. Oh, hang on a second. I may have let the cat out of the bag. Taylor, I think I would hold him to that, I don't know. So, yeah. Do you have something else? I tried, Taylor. I tried. I don't know. All right, let's see what else I could do here. I've still got several. So, actually, the next is a promotion to Communication Supervisor from our dispatch center, Ashley King. So our next four are new hires as firefighters. One thing that we do want to point out is that we only hire from our paid, on-call people, our part-time people. So these guys have all been part of our family for some time already. They just become official now as full-time firefighters. So the first new hire firefighter is Ethan Atkins. Our next new firefighter is Alex Gabler. Congratulations. The next firefighter is Michael Gutierrez. He's being pinned tonight by his girlfriend. Yeah, so girlfriend or fiancee? Okay. All right, very good. I wanted to clear that up. Actually, that was kind of a quick answer. Mike, I don't know. So... All right, and our final new hire firefighter is Justin Ramos. He's going to be pinned by his wife, Adrian. Justin also comes to us from Golden Valley, so maybe something there. And that concludes the badge pending. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just gonna wait a second, see if anyone was leaving. Yeah. Gonna wait just a minute. I'll just go ahead and read. Item four is call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. I don't have anyone that's signed up for call to the public. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the, I'm sorry. Thank you. I didn't. Thank you. If you could kindly state your, your name for the record, please?
Um, my name is Andrea McAdow. Um, I am the president of Kingman Main Street. Um, I just wanted to give a quick update on our, um, progress so far in our fundraising for the mural project. Um, we had a great show of support from the community at the latest First Friday and we raised around $3,200 so far. Um, so we received about 50 entries, um, after the close of the entry period for muralists. So we had a great response from them. Um, we are meeting this week to continue selection. Um, and it is formed a party of the Center for the Arts, um, as well as public members and members from, uh, Kingman Main Street. So we will pretty quickly be moving forward with that and hope to be completed by the end of September.
Well, thank you for that update. You, you've been very busy. That's a great work.
Colonel, I have a question. Can I ask, um, a question?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, call to the public, we can't talk.
May I, may I, may I ask though that you kindly fill out a, a request to speak so we have your contact information?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there anything on the consent agenda that any member of council wishes to have removed for discussion?
I'd like to remove M, please.
M is, M is in Mary. Okay. Any other items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item M.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to item M. Resolution number 5163 authorizing build grant application for I-11 East Kingman Connection Project Ranch House Santa Fe Parkway TI. Resolution number 5163 authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents and certifications necessary to submit this build grant application for the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project Ranch House Santa Fe Parkway TI. Your, your question, Vice Mayor?
Actually, I was going to ask if Mayor Foggan would speak to this a little bit because of the importance of this issue in our community. I thought that the citizens might be interested in how you've, uh, taken the grant this year, how it's changed from previous years and specifically the types of criteria that are being met in this grant application.
Sure, thank you, Vice Mayor. And, um, I've got Rob Owen, Public Works Director. He and his team are the ones that have been working on the build grant. And so I'm, I'm happy that, uh, he's here to answer the questions. Rob, if you wouldn't mind going through kind of the change from the tiger to the build grant and then some of the criteria that, that make this, uh, a lot better, uh, this year than it has, uh, gives us a better chance this year than in years past, so.
Uh, yes, sir. So this is a continuation of the Tiger Grant Program. We have applied for that the last several years. Um, this year there are some differences. There are $450 million out of the total 1.5 billion that is set aside for rural projects. Uh, rural projects do not require, um, any local match. Again, there's 1.5 billion, uh, awarded to the program, which is the, the largest award in several years. Uh, the maximum grant award is 25 million and no more than 150 million can be appropriated to any single state. Um, our total program or our total project cost is a little bit, uh, under $40 million, uh, meaning that our share that would have to be, um, met for the local match would be, um, just shy of $15 million. Um, applications are due tomorrow. Um, grant funds are only available for obligation through September 30th, 2020. Uh, any grant funds must be expended by September 30th. Some of the new criteria requirements include, uh, economic competitiveness, um, uh, innovation and project delivery, um, and some of the, with us having the new, um, capital projects, funding source, um, that's, that's definitely improves, um, our presentation for the grant application. So I can try to answer any other questions you might have.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, I think some of the criteria probably remain the same, such as safety and the, uh, impact on the safety because I know that's a big, uh, impact that this particular project would have.
And there's quite a bit of discussion in our narrative about the, the benefits this project would have for public safety.
Well, I thought it was very well done and I appreciate it. And, um, I hope that, you know, any public that are interested in this project could look at that narrative that's on the website because it's very informative. So thank you.
Thank you.
You had a question?
I'd like to make a, a point and Rob, maybe you know, maybe you can tell the audience and, and maybe you mentioned it. Um, but the, a big difference between the old Tiger Program and this new Bill Grant Program is they are pushing increased emphasis on funding in rural areas. Is that right? Do you note how much additional emphasis?
There's a 30% set aside of the entire program for rural projects. So that hasn't been in place prior.
So that also plays pretty heavily to our favor, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item M on the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no old business this evening, so under new business, item 7A, the opioid litigation, the law firm Keller Rohrbach made a presentation regarding the opioid issues and litigation options. City staff is requesting council direction. If the council wishes to retain Keller Rohrbach, then direct staff to enter into an agreement. Uh, this is at council discretion. Um, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, ma'am. I guess basically if you have any further questions, uh, obviously we have some time to ask them. But other than that, I'm basically, uh, if the council wants to move in that direction, I would ask for the direction for me to, uh, to start, uh, working on an agreement that I can bring back pretty quickly, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, well, aside from the data that Manager Foggan's going to be bringing back to everybody to consider before we make a decision, I'd be interested, if they're willing, uh, somebody from the KPD just to come down and, and maybe give their, I mean, they're the ones that are in the trenches. Um, I'd like to know what their, what their take is.
Mayor, council, we're very active, as you know, with the MSEP program. Chief De Vries is very much an integral part of that. He's in the leadership and he's been kind of driving that along with others, but he does have a significant role in that. Um, we see a significant impact with the opioid epidemic just in our local community. As you all know, we, uh, enacted our Narcan program almost two years ago now and, uh, it's been significant. Uh, we've actually seen a decrease in those overdoses on our part, but a lot of our cases involve peo- people that are on opioids, heroin, uh, opiates and whatnot. So, um, we, we support what the direction we're going. Uh, we do need that medically assisted treatment. Uh, I would support that as well. There is a need for that. Treatment facilities in our area are non-existent. We also have, uh, apologize, a program that's coming our way called the Angel Initiative and that'll enhance our needle exchange. We don't do it, but we support that, our Narcan program. And also if we had the, uh, with the Angel Initiative, when we have contact with these folks, uh, we would have an ability to hand them off to somebody in lieu of prosecution and they could be taken to a treatment facility. So that would be a, a good thing to use in regards to the discussion on funding, what we would use those resources for, so.
Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question? Not to put you on the spot.
That's all right.
Do you see a downside for the city entering into this kind of agreement?
I, I don't.
Okay.
No, it's kind of an aggressive move. I think that's necessary, just based on my humble opinion.
Well, I, I thank you very much for that. I appreciate your candor.
Yes.
And I, I did want to mention that we had discussion that we would not, we would make every attempt not to have a work session item and an action item, the same item on one agenda. But if council recalls, we have had this discussion before in a work session. Additionally, we've had it at the Tri-City Council Work Session as well. So this is really not anything new and we have had opportunity, um, to have this public discussion. Uh, the reason this is on the agenda, as I understand it, is there, there is some sense, I won't say urgency, but there's, there's some sense that we, we really need to get, get our place in line in a rather timely manner. And, and my assumption is what we're looking to do tonight is afford staff direction so that you can begin a framework for, for an agreement. Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the way I look at this basically is it's, there's, it's, there's no risk to the city. This is, you know, ultimately it's going to provide a benefit, um, if a settlement or a trial, uh, litigation victory happens to provide some things to the city that may be, uh, obviously beneficially or there, you know, recouping some damages that we would have to prove through fire department, police department or some other programs we might be able to pick up, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
We don't, um, I'm not sure which attorney to address it to, but, uh, we don't have any sort of ideas as far as, um, what sort of, uh, of, um, award the city might see for success.
I, I wish that I, I wish that I knew. I wish I could give you an, some, even an order of magnitude. What I, what I can say is, um, the, there have been, I want to say, three studies by federal agencies. Uh, the CDC estimated that the annual cost, uh, of the epidemic, uh, is in the $600 billion a year range. Uh, the vast bulk of that, uh, of those burdens are being, the, the economic burden is being felt by local governments, so cities and, and counties. Um, the, um, the President's Council of Economic Advisors actually estimated even larger, uh, annual impact it thought of the opioid epidemic, so I think it was over a trillion dollars. Uh, what does that mean? I can't tell you. Uh, but what I can tell you is that the way, um, we're approaching this litigation, the way I think many of the other counties and cities that we're working with are, are approaching this litigation is that this is, um, in many ways, this is a bigger case than the tobacco litigation. I, I know I spoke a little bit earlier about how this isn't exactly apples to apples, but that gives us a little bit of direction and I think that was a quarter of a trillion dollar settlement. So it, it's hard to tell where we are, I guess is what I'd say.
Sure, I understand. Uh, one last question. So, uh, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on the answer that, um, that the city is not going to incur any sort of financial obligation at all. Um, appeal, all of it, right?
That, that's, that's right. And I don't want to be the only one, I'm not, I don't want to just be saying it. The contract that we would be sharing with you all says it very explicitly in all bold caps, et cetera. Uh, the only time the city would ever pay a dollar to us is if we won. And that, you know, as I said, we lay out exactly what that, what that contingency fee is. And again, I don't want you to just trust my word, it's going to be written out in black and white in the contract. I'll tell you, uh, our firm has been around for more than 100 years. We really enjoy, we, for many reasons, representing government entities. We wouldn't have very many government clients if we went around suing our clients to pay us money that we don't, that we didn't get, uh, that we didn't earn and don't deserve.
Sure, thank you, sir.
Yeah, of course. Thank you very much, council member.
May I add something to that? Uh, in my research, I believe that, uh, the way the award is, is given to a city is you have to demonstrate the impact it has had to your city and that's based on that data that we've collected. To some extent?
Yes, to some extent.
Right? Okay, okay.
Um, you know, I guess, again, this is in the sort of, what's the, what's the magnitude of potential recovery? How do we go about allocating things? I guess the way, when we're working with one of our economists, so we, we have hired, as I mentioned earlier, a number of incredible, uh, experts that we're working with, uh, three of whom are economists at MIT. Uh, they serve, uh, each one of them actually were the, uh, chief economic advisor for the last three presidents of the United States. And would they, uh, remind us or have been telling us that some of the, the factors that you're, we want to look at is population size, but it's also things like, uh, death rates. Um, are there medically assisted treatment facilities already available? So we're, we're trying to balance, you know, size versus impact. There are going to be lots of different factors, I imagine, that will go into that, but, you know, those are big issues that we're going to be dealing with, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time to make this presentation.
I appreciate being invited, yeah.
Okay, um, what is the will of the council? Are we comfortable giving direction to staff to begin to draft an agreement? If I, I'd entertain a motion if, or do you need a motion?
Yeah, I would prefer to have a motion to direct me to, uh, and obviously the agreement would come back.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
But to enter into this agreement.
I make a motion that we move forward with, uh, participating in this litigation and direct staff to, uh, begin crafting a resolution or ordinance to bring back to council for approval.
An agreement? Can we say an agreement?
Agreement.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you all for, uh, recognizing how serious this is. And I, I kind of want to add on to what you said. I, I served on the foster care review boards, uh, and it started years ago. There was one board. There's now four. And the cases used to start at eight in the morning and end at noon. And now they start at eight and end at sometimes four and five o'clock. And to see the change, the reason children are coming into care, it's over 95%. There, uh, there's problems with, with, um, illegal substances. So thank you, council, for recognizing that this is one way that we can truly help our community.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item B, public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 1870 to reprove, approve the rezoning of property located at 3655 Lomita Avenue from R-16 residential, single-family, 6,000 square foot lot minimum to R-16 PDD residential, single-family, 6,000 square foot lot minimum, planned development district. A request from Kathy Tackett Hicks of KTH Consulting, applicant, and Jeff and Jane Holdsworth, property owners, have requested the rezoning of certain property from R-16 to R-16 PDD. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and reviewed, and reviewed of the goals and objectives of the Kingman General Plan 2030. The standard for review and the applicant General Plan 2030, the standard for review, and the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor members of the council. This is a rezoning case proposed by Kathy Tackett Hicks. Property owners Jeff and Jane Holdsworth, and the request is to rezone property located at 3655 North Lamita Street from R16 to R16 PDD. How this came about is there was a surveying error that resulted in a partially constructed house being located within the front yard setback. So, the PDD process would, if approved by the council, would allow a reduced front yard setback. The property, excuse me, itself is located on Lamita Street between Pert and Morrow Avenue. It's surrounded by R16 Zone property. Summary of events, we received the building permit application in March to construct a 1,300 square foot house on a 5,000 square foot lot. Site plan was submitted. Proposed home was shown within the required setbacks. Plans were approved. Building inspections were conducted. When they went out to find, or to do the inspections for the setbacks, they pulled that distance off the pins that were placed in error. So, at the time, it would appear to be 20 foot back from the front yard, from the front property line. However, in May, the app came to planning zoning, and after they became aware that the pins were not placed in the proper location, they sought guidance to see how to remedy the situation that would not involve tearing down the house and starting over again, as they were pretty far along in construction. We asked the building inspector to go out and verify that the setbacks were in violation. They were, once they had relocated the pins in the proper location. And part of the confusion arose because the surveyor was assuming, I believe, that Lamita was a 50-foot wide right of way. It has a 60-foot wide right of way, resulting in a greater distance from the back of the sidewalk to where the pins would be set. So, that kind of resulted in this, in this error. Staff recommended going through the PDD process. The PDD Planned Development District does allow the council to approve alternative setbacks that deviate from the normal zoning district requirements by ordinance. The staff processed a similar rezoning case in 2007, when it was discovered after the fact, after the homes were almost finished, that they were with, built within the front yard setback because of a surveying error. This is something we do on a case-by-case basis. This is not something that you would normally see in front of you, but this is a remedy for trying to resolve the situation. This is just a few photos of the site. This is what the house looks like today. This is about how far along they were when the, when the error was discovered. And this photo shows the location where the pin was in error, the correct location there. You can see with the flag. There's a five-foot difference there. Typically, again, four and a half feet from the back of the sidewalk is where the property pin would be, and that's where it was when they pulled the, the distance off of that for the 20-foot setback. Like I said, the error was discovered later on, after substantial construction had, had occurred. It appears that the proposed change would have a little impact on the community of the neighborhood. I know that in some places, there have been issues with 15-foot front yard setbacks because of vehicles extending into the sidewalks where you have a narrower front yard. However, in this case, because of the greater distance between the property line and the back of the sidewalk, this won't be an issue here. You have the extra five feet. So, that won't be a problem at this location if the 15-foot front yard setback is granted. So, the commission reviewed this matter in June. They did recommend approval, five to zero, and with the condition that the front yard setback shall be 15 feet and all other setback and development standards would apply to the property. And that recommendation is in Ordinance 1870. That's before you this evening, and staff recommends approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have this evening, and the applicant is also here this evening.
Thank you very much. I just want to start by quickly saying, just for the sake of full disclosure, my family business does have some construction projects on that block, but, and I have had discussion with the city attorney, this will, and whatever the result of this photo is, will no way materially or even minimally impact what we're doing. I just wanted to disclose that for the sake of transparency. Does anyone on, on council have questions of staff at this time? Yes, please.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I, I went and looked at this property today, and can you clarify for me, there seems to be a lot in between the house being built and the one that's currently there. Is that a buildable lot, and we would assume that eventually another house would be built in between?
Yes, there's a buildable, one 5,000 square foot lot in between these two properties, and that could be built upon in the future.
Okay. And then, I just want to clarify something that you had just said. So, there's, there's still an extra five feet. Is that right? So, it is actually 20 feet back from the sidewalk?
The house will be actually about, but the garage will be about 24 and a half feet from the back of the sidewalk. I'm sorry, it would be about 19 and a half feet from the back of the sidewalk. Typically, it would be about 24 and a half feet if the setback was, was meant at 20 feet. But that's about, that's about what you would have in a normal, on a normal street that's 50-foot wide with a 20-foot setback. So, it works out where that, any vehicle is parked in the driveway will not extend into the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you. Thank you. Other questions of staff? Okay, this, I'll go ahead.
I just have one. So, this becomes a PDD, a Planned Development District?
That's correct.
And how many houses are in the district?
Well, in this case, it'd be one. Just, just the one house.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Okay, that's the applicant. Do we have any questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1870.
I'll make that motion. That, sorry.
To approve Ordinance 1870?
To approve Ordinance 1870.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item C, public hearing and consideration of Ordinance Number 1872, a request to rezone property located on Gates Avenue from R110 Residential Single Family 10,000 square foot lot minimum to R2 PDD Residential Multiple Family Low Density Planned Development District. A request from Bob Boyd, applicant, and Hisham and Michelle Sahani, property owners, for the rezoning of property located on the south side of Gates Avenue between Golf Drive and Western Avenue from R110 to R2 PDD. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June 12, 2018. The commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the rezoning request from R110 to R2 PDD with four conditions as stated in Ordinance Number 1872. Staff recommends approval.
A good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is a rezoning request from R110 to R2 PDD. The requested rezoning would allow the splitting of a property located in Gates Avenue between Golf Drive and Western Avenue to allow the development of two dwellings with a common wall and a 15-foot front yard setback. This is the site. It's located adjacent to the golf course, just to the east of the Villas at Surbat, Villas at Surbat Cliffs. The property itself is zoned R110 currently. There's R2 PDD zoning immediately to the west, which is what the patio home areas is zoned. That zoning would then be extended to the east to include this property. The property itself is just over 10,000 square feet. General plan designation is three to eight units per acre. It was annexed into the city in 1971. There's been no record of any development since that time. There was a comment from the engineering department regarding drainage, which I'll get to in a moment. Property is actually accessed off of Gates Avenue, which is a paved street with curb, gutter and sidewalk, but there's no street improvements on the south side of the roadway adjacent to this property. Street improvements would be required at the time of development. This is just an aerial view of the site, showing the water and sewer in the area, with the patio homes to the, to the west, single-family homes to the east and to the north. We did notify all the property owners within the area within 300 feet. One of the neighboring property owners expressed some concerns over the possibility of, of their building a duplex on the property. I did talk to that individual this afternoon, and they're okay with the, the present proposal that's before you to split the property and have essentially a patio home type development. There were no objections from any departments or agencies. As I mentioned, there was a comment from the city engineer regarding drainage. This afternoon, we did receive a drainage report from their engineer, and we'll be reviewing that to make sure the drainage is, is addressed on the site. So, again, the proposal is to split the property and have two dwellings with a common wall on, on the site. The PDD designation, if, if approved, would allow the lot sizes and was to be reduced below the minimum standards of 6,000 square feet and 60 feet respectively. The PDD was also proposed to allow the 15-foot setback in the front, sort of 20 feet, which is what's currently allowed in the Villas to the west. However, we went over that discussion at the last item. There's been concerns over vehicles extending into sidewalks when you have a 15-foot setback, and in this case, the P&amp;Z commission recommended maintaining the 20-foot front yard setback. So, this is just a preliminary site plan of, of the, of the location. They intend to do a similar development, similar to the patio homes to the west. The site is a little bit larger than those lots. Again, the property would be split down the center with, with a parcel plat, more or less evenly. The P&amp;Z commission reviewed this item back in June and voted four to, four to one to recommend approval for the rezoning from R110 to R2 PDD with the following conditions. One, all R2 setback standards shall apply to the subject property. New lots shall be created through the city's adopted minor lot split process. The minimum lot size would be 5,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 38.2 feet. At the time of development, the developer shall retain the engineer to assess any drainage impacts on the subject site and provide a recommendation on how to handle the flows. And as I mentioned, that has been addressed this afternoon. And the extension of street improvements in Gates would also be required at the time of development. They've also submitted some street improvement plans, which will have to be reviewed. So, staff recommends approval of the Ordinance 1872, which contains all the conditions before you, and I'll be happy, happy to answer any questions you have. And the applicant is here as well this evening.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Does the applicant wish to address the council at this time? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. It is now an action item.
I have a, I have a brief question of the applicant.
Okay, well, I, do I need to reopen the public hearing? Doesn't matter. Okay, applicant.
Good evening. Bob Boyd.
Mayor, Council, Hisham Sahani.
Good evening. I was in attendance of the P&amp;Z meeting when this came before them. I recall that you were not particularly adamant about the setback one way or the other, and agreed to the, their recommendation. Has your position on setback for uniformity with the existing homes, I, and I, I know that's why you were seeking a 15-foot setback as opposed to the 20, so that the lot, the, the fronts of the houses would all line up with the, you know, the, your new one with the existing. Has your position on that changed at all? Are you still buying one way or the other?
Yeah, the original, the original request was to maintain or ask for 15-foot setback to maintain aesthetics of the front.
Right, I recall.
The street with the other buildings. But the, I believe the P&amp;D, P&amp;Z recommended that they would prefer that we do a 20-foot setback. We're not against that.
We are also, there was a concern about the parking on the street. It's a particular design that we're looking at at this particular time. Our garages are 27 feet and 29 feet deep, and they also have eight-foot doors where you could park a good-sized vehicle inside of them, trying to discourage parking on the street. So, as far as we're concerned, we'd like to maintain the front, but we can work around it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
All right, once again, it's an action item. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1872 with the conditions as stated in the ordinance.
Sorry, I do have a question of staff. The ordinance is written the way it already is. Can it be modified to adjust for a 15-foot setback in lieu of the 20, or would that have to be rewritten for, and brought back for approval as such?
I believe it was the P&amp;Z directed it at 20, so if you were to make that change, I think that would probably be enough of a substantial change. You'd probably have to go back. I don't remember if we've had to do that before in the past.
Well, I, I believe it was advertised. I, I'd have to check and see. No, the public notice for the P&amp;Z commission was advertised for 15 feet.
Was it?
But I, I can't recall if I did that for the council meeting tonight.
I, I have a question, then. There's a house on the other side of the lot. Is that setback at 20?
The house would be 20. Well, I, I don't know how, how far back they actually are set, but they're, the minimum setback would be 20 in that case.
So, from that, from that direction coming in?
Mm-hmm.
The 20 is still coherent?
Correct, right.
And then it comes out for the smaller homes?
Right.
So, I think perhaps that's what P&amp;Z was looking at.
Any other questions, councilmember?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from, of staff at this time? Okay, so, once again, if there's no further discussion, it is now an action item. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1872 with the condition, with the four conditions, conditions as stated.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
You have, I'm sorry, you have discussion, please.
In order to allow for the 15-foot setback, council would at this point have to direct staff then to rewrite the ordinance and bring that back as an option. Is that not correct?
That would be my position at this point, because the, the P&amp;Z commission approved it at 20, and then what you're doing is you're allowing for this variance or this, this reduced standard. So, if we were going to do that, then we'd probably go back.
Does, what is staff, Mr. Henry, what is, what would staff's position on, on the 15-foot allowance be in order to maintain our aesthetic consistency with the existing development? Or, Mr. Pryor?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. My name's Mike Pryor. I'm the Assistant City Engineer. I think our position would be to maintain the 20-foot setback due to concern with parking. If you were to have a vehicle parked in the front of those new buildings, we are concerned that the back of the vehicles would extend across the sidewalk. So, our preference would be 20-feet setback. Thank you.
So, we currently have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the ordinance as presented. Am I correct?
That's where you're at right now.
Okay. And do we, Mr., I, I see the, the applicant has raised his hand. Can we, do we go ahead and vote at this time, or procedurally, what do you want me to do here?
That's up to you if you think there's further need for discussion, unless someone calls for the vote.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to department reports, Mr. Foggan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, just a couple of things that I wanted to update you on. As I missed them in my weekly update, and since I had this meeting, I thought I'd just take a few minutes to cover a couple of things that I actually meant to cover. One is, we are still working on the rollout of the new website, and we took comments from the council when we presented it a little while ago and thought that they were, the comments were pretty legitimate, that it needed to be spiced up just a little bit more, turning pretty to beautiful. And so we've been working on that, and our consultant or the web designer that we're using has been adding some graphics, lightening up the page, making it a little bit more inviting. So just know that that is in the works, and our plan is to go live with that August first. So just wanted to give the council an update on that. And then the other thing is, I just want to let you know that we've been working on the RFP for the branding and marketing project. That's probably one of the bigger projects that we're going to undertake this year, really important to our economic development, the ability to attract residents as well as commercial and industrial folks to our area. That RFP is nearly done and should be ready to go out and will go out next week. So we're excited to have that process underway, and just wanted to let you know that that is close to being out for bid. So we're excited to be in the process of identifying someone that's going to help us do some branding and marketing. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any other department reports? Okay, then we'll move on to announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Did you want to start?
I would.
Councilmembers, do.
I would like to invite everybody to come to an M-Step meeting so that you can hear a little bit more firsthand. It's a lot of doctors in the community and mental health care providers that are at the table discussing what's happening in our community, what's being done to have an impact. M-Step meetings are on the third Tuesday, and I'm going to ask the chief to email everybody a formal invitation. There's also an opioid symposium that's happening at MCC here in Kingman on October 6th, and we are going to invite the entire community, but there'll be different speakers who are experts in their field, who will just help us find some direction in what we can do to make a difference in this crisis. It's a real crisis. And we already had an update from the Main Street Group, but we do have this mural project that the mural will be unveiled at the Andy Devine Days Festival. We didn't go over that, but it will be finished by the end of the, by the Andy Devine Days Festival, and it will be located right behind the Beale Street Theater. So we're really excited about that. And the fifty applicants that put in a packet, they come from all over the world. So I think that's really neat that so many people want to be a part of downtown revitalization here in Kingman, Arizona. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wade?
Thank you. I did have an announcement. The Youth Advisory Commission met last week, and they discussed the upcoming service project, which, as many of you know, is, the Youth Advisory Commission will be teaming up with a nonprofit organization called Sleep in Heavenly Peace. Their motto is "No Kid Sleeps on the Floor in Our Town," and they're a nonprofit organization that builds beds for children in need. So they have, they discussed and kind of narrowed down the date of the build, which will be August 11th, and they discussed starting the build at two o'clock. So they're encouraging all to participate, volunteer. You can go on shpbeds.org and sign up to volunteer and/or make a donation. The Youth Advisory Commission is still seeking donations from local businesses so that they can collect enough money to build a sufficient amount of beds for this particular build. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Yocum?
Just a reminder for everyone's sake that tomorrow is the Tri-City Council meeting at ten o'clock at the hospital. A couple of general items of note are Arizona Department of Transportation update, a rural transportation summit, and discussion of possible action on requests from City of Needles for support of the continuance of Amtrak service to the area.
Thank you very much. I was invited to and attended a meeting last week, I think, at the county regarding a new corporate farmer coming into our area to plant pistachio trees. This is obviously a growing concern, and I will be working with the city as well as county and other stakeholders in the community to address this problem in the most timely manner. The amount of land they're talking about, I mean, in one day, we were talking about twelve thousand acres that they are going to begin farming, three hundred and twenty acres just by the end of this year alone. This, again, our most valuable resource. We certainly need to make this our number-one priority as a community, and I'm confident working with Mr. Foggan and his background in water issues that we can work towards protecting and preserving this most valuable asset. Thank you.
Council, Vice Mayor Miles?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Lincoln Felter?
Yes, thank you. Last week, myself, Nick Haunt, and Manager Foggan met in Manager Foggan's office to talk about officially kicking off the Water Sustainability Committee that this city has created. Thankful for that meeting, thankful for Nick and his expertise and all the people that have, they're subject experts, and I'm glad that they're going to be participating in that. We talked about, you know, how the city staff is going to be working with the committee, and we even talked about, the governor's office has come out with a water policy, it's like eleven or thirteen-page water policy document. To have this committee not only look at recharge projects, sustainability projects, but also come out with recommendations for local Kingman water policy documents, similar to what the state has for the council and the public to review and to hopefully move on down the line. So we do need to be proactive and keep working on that.
Thank you very much. Final item of regular business. Do we have any council requests for future work session, agenda items, and/or calendar adjustments? We'll start with Councilmember Lincoln Felter.
Yes, I did have one. I asked in an email a couple of times from Manager Foggan for the information regarding the airport, Kingman Airport, strategic planning process that we are going to be going through. I think I'd like to have a work session just as a republic report. I think a lot of people in Kingman would be interested in knowing about that process.
Yeah, we just met with FAA today, and we do have finally, we know where we are with the grant process, and so we finally have the ability to kind of understand what a timeline will look like. So your request is timely.
Yeah, could we have a work session for the public to tell them about the process?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, and what we're trying to do is make sure that all the departments and all the areas of interest get a workshop time, and it's, you know, covering the airport's probably one of those things that we want to do sooner than later.
You know, I see it as our most valuable asset, so we need to keep the public informed. So thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Vice Mayor Miles?
I'd rather see that as part of our economic development planning too as we move forward, and I know that we're doing the strategic planning with Chabon, and I would like some type of, you know, feedback or update on how that is, where we're at with that, and also the parks, because tonight we mentioned several of the planning initiatives that we're doing, but I think we need to keep apprised, and the public apprised, of the various ones that are underway.
Did you say parks?
The parks, yes.
Okay, yes, and we have, we have trails as a workshop coming up shortly, so we will, I think we'll have a nice presentation on the importance of trails and where we are with them.
I just think the city has got such a wonderful frenzy of planning going on, if you will, that it would be good to keep the public kind of just in step with this as we move along.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything to add. Would you like something? Councilmember Wade?
I do. Sorry. First, I would like to ask if we could get an updated calendar. I'm not sure where we are with our upcoming items for the work sessions, so if you could send that out. And the item that I would like to request for a work session would be to discuss what the city's current policy, process, and laws are in regards to code enforcement, and with that, to talk about how we could resolve some of the issues that we have with things like the illegal containers, parking, building code issues, and trash and weed abatement. There is a new Dollar General in downtown Kingman that was just put in that makes me furious every time I see it because the weeds are thicker than the landscape that was put in, and they're several feet tall, and I'm not sure that the city has a way of enforcing cleanup on that property and making it look nice, but the newest property in downtown is one of the worst-looking. We need to address that.
Well, I can say that we do have a policy and process to clean up properties, no matter if it's commercial or residential, so I wouldn't be surprised if they've received some kind of notification. And I'm happy to report that we do have scheduled a workshop on code building inspection, and we can add code, probably is a nice hand-in-hand workshop.
Great.
For October, I believe.
In October. Okay, very good. I think it'd be helpful if people knew what steps they could take, you know, in that. Okay, thank you.
I want to thank you for your plug of Dollar General.
Oh, man.
I agree with you. It's infuriating. Anything else any council member wishes to have added to the calendar? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing none, we do have need for an executive session this evening. City Attorney has requested city council go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431 oh three dash four to discuss and provide direction regarding the litigation with the KAA. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to do so. Enter executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There is possibility of action on this agenda item, correct? Okay.[1379.12]
Do we even need to sit down?
I think so.
Because it's a change in the...
Yes.
I get the concept of the open meeting law. I get it well, thank you, Sidney.
There's no reason for any further discussion or action on this item. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?